And our first order of business is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you're able.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up is a usual consent agenda. We have meeting minutes as well as special education reserve fund transfers. Those documents are in the packet if there's any questions about that. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mari, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Come on in, we don't bite. Next up is our public comment. This for tonight, our public comment at the front of the meeting is really for non-budget related topics. Budget-related public comment will be part of the budget hearing. So this public comment, my usual spiel doesn't apply much of it, but a reminder for most items or topics on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person in this portion. Please use public comment even if you refer to something later on the agenda, that doesn't apply tonight. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. Raise your hand and you'll be promoted to panelists and unmuted or in-person at the microphone in Millennium Building, Conference Room B. So just to reiterate, this is for non-budget items at this point in the agenda. So we'll give a minute to see.
Nothing on Zoom either.
Sound out, we're working. Okay. Okay, great. We'll move on to informational updates and start with the students.
Okay, so we have advisor number four tomorrow, right? Tomorrow, January 7th. And then, so that's just, you know, exciting, shorter classes and students are excited. We have on January 10th, the Career Exploration Breakfast for the juniors and sophomores, I believe. Yeah, juniors and sophomores, so that's something to look forward to. You get to like eat some good food from the cafeteria and like, I think it's like warm, like cinnamon stuff, and then you get to talk with some really cool people, different careers, and you get to pick. It's really exciting. Obviously, we have no school MLK Day, which is coming up. It's kind of like, like right in the middle of midterms, which is exciting. We've got midterms the Friday before we're at for that little long weekend, then we have it Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so it's a nice break for kids to study, I think. And then one more comment, I know school start times might, the committee might comment, but we did send out a survey to the student population before break, before winter break. We got 430 responses. We got a lot of feedback, which is really good. I would say we definitely, like skimming through it all, there's a lot of different responses. I would say a majority is for a later start time, however, the minority definitely has some really valid concerns that I think we're still kind of combing over, so we're chugging through it.
Yeah, so DECA has their district competition conference on Wednesday and Thursday, January 8th and 9th. There will be approximately 250 competitors from WA just competing in different areas of business, like finance, business administration, hospitality, and all sorts of things. And also on Friday, the 24th, there will be a freshman and sophomore only semi-formal hosted by Sad and Stuko.
Thank you, guys.
Superintendent update.
Sure, I want to first draw your attention to, in the packet, there's informational, well, there's documents from Valley Collaborative. We are a member of Valley Collaborative, and as a superintendent, I'm a member of the board at Valley, and so they've asked that we share different documents with you. Their annual report is in there, FY25, FY24 financial statements and FY25 quarterly statements are in there. They're, one of our responsibilities is to make sure that we're sharing all that information. And this Thursday will be our next meeting where we'll actually be voting on their FY26 budget. So that's just informational for all of you. If you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to me or reach out to Chris Scott, the director there as well, too. And then at our last meeting, I'd mentioned, or I think it was the last meeting, it was one of the last two meetings when we were talking about different policies, I'd mentioned that I might, there was a possibility that I was going to be appointed to the Mass Commission for LGBTQ youth. That has happened, so I will be representing the Superintendent Association and of course Westford. And the first meeting is, well, our orientation meeting is Thursday night, so that's exciting. So I just think that'll be a great new thing that I'll be able to share information with you about and, and I think hopefully provide information to the commission from the school perspective.
Thank you. School committee. Nothing, Tom, Bill?
School start times update. We're going to look at a public hearing, just like we're doing tonight, for the 21st, which will be our next school committee meeting to hear from residents and community members, just like this forum, we were talking about having a separate night from our regular school committee meetings, but I think this is a better forum, potentially bringing in some, maybe a few principals to also talk as well and just have a good discussion that will better inform all of us, you know, because not every school committee member can be present or may not be present for a different forum aside from these scheduled meetings. So that's going to be our plan for the 21st.
Just to clarify, we're, we're thinking that will be like a short business meeting and then the forum starts at 8:00 PM. That'll be hybrid with the usual Zoom link, so it's very accessible for people. We're hoping the 8:00 PM is a little bit even better for, like to get through bedtimes, to get through dinnertime, sports schedules, all that stuff. And I think Bill covered the rest of it, so.
What date was that again?
That's 21st.
It's our next scheduled meeting.
Instead of like adding another date, right? Like it's going to be on top of our usual meeting.
It's a Tuesday.
But it is a Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday.
Community survey is going to go out as well.
It's live.
And it's live.
Yes, so, yep.
Hot off the press.
That's okay. No, we, we worked, Catherine and I worked today to put a landing page on the district website. So underneath, if you go to the district website, about us and then school committee page, there's now a fresh landing page on the left that brings you right to all of the start time information. We're going to keep updating it. It was kind of a push to get it ready to announce tonight that the survey was ready and that the forum is scheduled, but there's a frequently asked document up there as well. And we're going to look, take a look. Oh, that, that, this is, you'll, you'll see, you'll hear a little bit more about this during the goals, but there's been a little bit of a refresh of our website. Thank you to Kathy Mucci. And if you click right on start times. Here's a landing page because we're hoping that there's going to be a blurb in principal newsletters on Fridays pointing everybody to the survey and showing the proposed change and then other ways to share feedback. So our email is right up there and the forum is up there and the survey. Okay, good.
Thank you for taking it.
Yeah, happy to.
That's great.
And we'll have the results of the survey for the 21st?
We're planning to close the survey on, what do we say, the 20th? Yep, so we'll have preliminary results for the 21st, yep.
It's also not a very big survey. Like we've really tried to keep it succinct.
Yep. It's brief.
Yeah.
So I interrupted on updates, anything else?
Nope.
Any other updates along the line?
Yeah, Superintendent Eval, next Monday, 12 o'clock. It is a exclusively video conference. There will be an agenda posted. If anyone wants a link, feel free to join us, but we'll check in with Dr. Chu and his yearly goals and his progress and see if things need to be tweaked and go from there.
Thanks. Lori, anything?
Just a quick policy update because I know we put a policy on pause for the final vote before Christmas, the winter break. The policy committee are going to meet next week, January 15th, and to kind of review that policy and where it's at now based on the feedback we get, and then we'll have an update for you on the 21st. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Our first, our first item under business tonight is a mid-year progress update on the committee's goals. And there is a brief presentation in our packet. I followed the format that we've been using like last year when our goals were brand new. You can just jump right in. A reminder, we approved these goals at the start of the school year after discussion in our summer retreat. Goal number one is really a couple of action items related to the organization and accessibility of our committee information. So I alluded to the second bullet earlier, which was to give some updates to our school committee website. Some of it was housekeeping, reorganization, clearing out some sort of outdated links and stuff like that. Kathy has been really helpful to get that done, and obviously a big push for that was to make it very clear and easy for people to find the start time information with that, with that proposal. The other bullet here is, as you all are well aware, are of our backlog in executive session minutes. For the public that might not be aware, anytime we're in executive session, which is protected for confidentiality reasons, those minutes need to be reviewed within another executive session. And we can approve them for like accuracy first, but then we take another vote at a later time when we can either make redactions or the reason for privacy has expired, and then they're, they're approved for public release. And it's actually a bit of a process, like there's redactions, the Google, Google highlight of a black line does not count as a redaction, so there's like another step in Adobe Acrobat that needs to take place. We have a tracker, it's all, it's a bit of a tedious work, but we're catching up, we're almost done with FY20, so that's good. And then there's like 16 more in FY21, so, you know, we'll keep slogging through, but I'm really proud that in the last couple of months, we've done 21 sessions have been released, so I marked both of those as significant progress. For goal two, we had, we committed ourselves to a review of financial-related policies. One of, the first bullet should be very familiar to everybody with that non-general fund guidebook that we talked about in November. The Finance Subcommittee worked all fall to create a new document, a new work product that hadn't existed before with consolidated location for information and recommended balances on all 19 of our revolving slash non-general accounts. I didn't mark it as complete yet because it says approve and we haven't voted on it yet, so if you remember what we had talked about before was Finance Subcommittee will kind of meet, this is almost like a pilot, and Finance Subcommittee will meet in a couple of weeks, have some reflections on inputs that have come in or in how it went through the FinCom hearings and the budget process, and then we'll bring it back to the committee for a final vote to say this is the process, this is the format we liked, this worked well. Any questions on that? And then the next one is review policies in the Series 3000 section, so all of our policies are organized by sections, and those are the ones related to finance. And so we plan to, in the spring, hopefully get some, a review of the, a lot of the policies in that section. Policy Subcommittee is smiling at me because they're grateful.
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Our gift to you guys.
Is no progress because we took a little well-deserved break over the budget period right now, so we'll pick that up in late February, early March. And goal three was to support the work alongside the master plan initiatives. The first bullet is about the start time Subcommittee will present a recommendation. It's got a longer goal, which is the only reason why I didn't complete, mark it as complete because it talks about the outreach plan and everything, so, you know, it's on its way to completion, but I marked it as significant progress. The next one is to collaborate with the Robinson Building Committee, so I think we gave an update in the last December meeting, but in case you hadn't known, in case you didn't know, that committee has formed and has started meeting. So just, I'm the liaison to that, and so that's the collaboration we see happening. And the last one is to support the creation of a building utilization report. Dr. Chu, Jeff Goodwin, Director of Facilities, and I have been touring all of the buildings. We look at like the floor plans from the SMMA, which rated each classroom as adequate-sized for up-to-date educational needs or smaller or larger, and so we're looking at that information to see how many sections can really fit, how do you account for special education services, intervention services, what kind of rooms can be shared, and so we're hoping to work that towards a final like report that would be shared with you all. So we're about halfway through our tours and less than halfway through a report so far. So those are our three goals, we're midpoint, and I think we're in good, good shape. Any reactions, questions?
I think it's pretty clear. I really like that we're, we're doing this, just kind of as in the mid-year review. It's kind of nice to see what other, you know, what everyone's been working on and where we're all as a, as a group.
Yep. And in one place, because sometimes there's like an agenda update here and here and here, but this is like one place that shows the work going on.
Thanks for all the hard work.
I know. Keep it up.
Great, okay. The next order of business is mail courier and custodial supervisor job description updates.
Yeah, so in the packet, we've included the two different job descriptions. A little context, so we've, there's been, as the custodial supervisory position was created a couple of years ago, the primary focus was overseeing all of the school custodial staff and supporting the facilities office in that regard. In reality, what we've seen is there's actually a need for him to also be supporting the town custodians as well, too. And so one of the things that we had actually discussed with our town partners earlier in the fall is that, that he has more responsibilities and that they should actually be contributing also to his, to this, to this role's salary as well, too. And as, similar to a way, just for the committee's memory, like our, the Director of Facilities is a shared position, we pay a certain percentage of the salary, the town pays another percentage of the salary. That didn't exist, that shared percentage breakdown didn't exist with the custodial supervisor. And so that's what we talked to them about, we looked at increasing it because it was increased responsibilities, and the town picked up the additional increase. So it didn't, we didn't increase the salary, the town increased the salary from their side and now started contributing to it. And so what you'll see, the, the only real change in the custodial supervisor's job description is the, the articulation of these responsibilities for the town. So you'll now see school and town buildings, you'll see supporting the school and town custodians. And so that's what, those are really the changes that exist, there were no other major changes to the roles and responsibilities, except we were just looking at really the bandwidth, he's, he's, he's really just supporting more people, and so that was something that we wanted to articulate. Now, in connection with that, originally, some of his, or some of this, this individual's responsibilities were actually making sure that the millennium was being cleaned every single day. And so what you'll see as a change in the mail courier's job description, the only change there is adding the responsibility for two hours a day to clean the millennium building. And so that's the only change with that job, and so that's why we're bringing them to you together, that's the purpose of this. And so we, you know, typically you would have these for a couple of meetings before you vote on them, so I'm sharing that information with you. You have them, of course, if you have any questions, you can either, if you have any right now, certainly happy to answer them, but if, after you take a look at them, if you, if anything comes up, just let us know. But that's really the context behind the whole recommendation to, to make the adjustments.
Any questions from the committee?
I would just comment that it's another efficiency also to have it a very shared position rather than having two bodies doing the same work, so.
I'm just curious how long it takes to do the courier part of the job.
It, it was fewer hours, so adding the two hours a day actually increases his hours.
Yeah, okay.
That's actually an additional responsibility for him, so that, that, but he, it's something that, one of the things that we've also found is that the individual who has been, who serves the role of the courier also fills in quite a bit as a sub custodian as well, too. Over, you know, when, when, when that's necessary.
So is it typically 40 hours a week or?
It has been less than 40 hours a week.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And Chris, the split of salary that will start now or next year?
Yes. It start, it started now. Well, in addition, really, again, what happened is the town, the town made an addition to the salary because of the increased responsibilities and the additional buildings, and, and they were providing that. So moving forward, we'll see more of a, you'll see it in more in a similar way than which we saw the Director of Facilities salary, but what this really was, was increasing the salary and they were paying for that increase. So it's, we're not seeing a split necessarily currently, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the accurate way to explain that, Jenny, would you say? Yeah, thanks. Always love it. She's like, yes.
She keeps you on track.
She does. Always like, I just want to make sure I said it correctly.
So as part of our usual practice, that'll come back to us on the next. Yes, meeting agenda, thank you for, to vote. It's too early for my brain to stop working. Okay, all good there?
Great.
So we're, we are a little ahead of schedule, but I'm not worried if somebody was aiming for 7:45 because I don't think we're going to finish this conversation by 7:45. So we'll start a little ahead of schedule for FY26 budget public hearing. This is in accordance with our Massachusetts General Law Section 38N of Chapter 71, and I'll take a motion to open the public hearing for the FY26 school budget.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Great. So this will be an opportunity for the public to ask FY26 budget-related questions. Please limit comments to three minutes just to try to make sure we get through everybody, but I'm not going to cut you off if you have fresh questions to add to. The committee and administration will respond to questions, and we do have some in the emails to bring up. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, and as we maybe swap back and forth from in-person to Zoom, we'll unmute people that way and, and give everybody a chance.
Can I go ahead and invite Director of Finance Jenny Lynn to join me here at the table so that it's people, I'm assuming some people in the room would like to ask questions, and this way Jenny won't need to be using that microphone if she's answering.
Yep, great, and I want to mention that if you're in-person, we do write down, if you can start by introducing yourself and your ad, sharing your address, because we write that down for public records, and there's a sign-in sheet to make sure we get it right for the minutes. We're ready. Always take somebody.
Take somebody, right? Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Almeida, I live at 41 West Street, so thank you for having the hearing tonight and for opening, opening it up for questions. I confess, I have not read every line of the budget, but come tonight with one question, and that has to do with the WA music budget. I know it looks like an 18% reduction from what was budgeted in the current fiscal year to what's budgeted for next year, and my understanding of that is there were, last year, I understand you had two FTEs that you proposed reducing each to .7, and then the community said, can we keep at least one FTE in that music department? So Mr. Shuckleton, the band director, is still with us full-time, and my question is, what happened to that other .4 FTE that was budgeted for the current year? And is that what, did that get filled? If not, is that why we're seeing an 18% reduction? And if it wasn't filled, why not?
So excellent question. So the first piece is that the, what you're seeing is not a new reduction, right? So the way in which you explained that was very helpful for people because you're right. We ended up with, initially, there was a recommendation to make a different reduction than what ended up happening. When, when an individual ended up resign, ended up resigning, they ended up absorbing one of the sections, the curriculum coordinator picked up a section in, in, in music and then which left a .4, which is accurate. Following the scheduling and following the course, the course request and the scheduling, they realized that they didn't need to use that .4 there, they were able to schedule classes in another way, and they used that .4 to help support some of the world language courses. So what we're seeing, what you see in the change in the line item as an 18% decrease is not a change in what is actually happening in FY25, so FY26, we're in, we're proposing that we continue to do the same thing that we're doing in FY25. What you, what it is, is it's an accurate accounting of where that FT ended up. The FTE, the .4, ended up in a different department, and so it, it didn't say that in the line item, if, if that makes sense.
That does make sense, and I'm surprised to hear that there wasn't demand for more music classes that would have justified keeping more staffing in the music department, just knowing that we have passionate musicians in our community, and that surprises me to hear that we formerly needed two FTEs to meet the demand of the music, music students, and then we only needed one FTE to meet that demand in the current year.
One, one of the things that we were talking about and looking at was the number of students in each section. And so while there had been more sections in the past, the numbers of the students in those sections didn't warrant continuing to run them as separate sections, so they were combined. So that's, it, it wasn't that there was a decrease in the number of students who were interested in taking the sections, it's that the number of students that requested the sections, they were able to put them, they were able to reduce the sections and put them, put the ensembles together.
Okay, and I think one of the students here is going to speak to that, combining and what that impact has been. I don't, I don't want to talk about the PE graduation requirements, but in terms of demand for the music classes, my concern is, one of my concerns is how the PE graduation requirement stands now, requiring kids to take one semester per year impacts their ability to take music classes as well. Not even allowing them to combine those, you know, two classes in one year to open up a full year for a music class, that has an impact that may look like students aren't signing up for music, but it may be because there's something else going on in the schedule that's preventing them from taking those classes. So I know you're not discussing graduation requirements tonight, but want to put that on the table for when you get to that conversation later in the year. Thank you.
Did you sign in, Elizabeth?
Thank you.
Do we want to switch to somebody on Zoom?
We don't have anyone on Zoom yet, with hands up. They're all very quiet on Zoom tonight.
There might be a few more people that want to talk about music, so if you, if you want to continue on the music, yeah, if you want to continue on the music for a little while.
Do you want to leave them in?
Just a quick question, when we're talking about those two positions, are we talking about band and orchestra at the high school as, and the ensembles that those two teachers ran?
So someone can come up to the table while we're.
Right, so I.
Is that for band and orchestra? Is that the positions we're talking about?
There are two. There are two, those were the two positions.
That's why, I just wanted to be clear about what that was.
And so, and, and, and when, what Elizabeth was talking about, when there was a, the possibility of reducing both of them to part-time positions and as opposed to ending up keeping one position.
And now Adam Shackleton is doing both orchestra and band.
Yes. So there's, there's still two music teachers at WA?
Yes.
But where there were three last year.
Right, yes. That's what I, I would just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But is, is there an addition in the personnel update?
That's great, yeah, do that.
Sign on the paper.
Do you want to go to the students?
Yeah. No, I was going to say, sometimes we switch back and forth, but if they, if you're a continuation of the last, let's stick in-person.
Thank you so much for providing us with this opportunity. My name is Madarika Sivakumar, I'm a sophomore at Westford Academy. And I'm here, I play violin, I'm here on behalf of WA's orchestra program. So going off of what Elizabeth previously mentioned, band and orchestra are completely different ensembles with different disciplines, mentalities, different teaching styles, styles of music. Mr. Shackleton, our current director, is incredibly skilled and he's incredible teacher, but he is primarily a band teacher. And we as orchestra have been struggling to adapt to some of these structural changes. Stylistically, just mental-wise, it's, it's definitely been quite a shift for us and we have been struggling with that. Furthermore, Mr. Shackleton also runs several additional clubs and ensembles outside of school, which it supports the students, but ultimately it isn't fair to him nor to us to have a teacher that is spread out so thin. It's, it's really difficult. And because of these reductions in the music department, some of the opportunities that we've had have also decreased in the sense that we used to have three different orchestras last year, where we had honors orchestra, symphony orchestra, and then we had chamber for the freshmen. This year, however, symphony and honors have been combined and symphony is a lower level than honors, which ultimately has decreased the number of pieces that we're learning with repertoire. And it's also like reduced the amount of time that we're spending on stage. And ultimately, it's also difficult for the honors students because they aren't able to challenge themselves as much with more difficult pieces. With all this in mind, this is just the surface of some of the struggles that we've been facing since the budget cuts. My peers and I are super, super passionate about music, we really do want to pursue this. And with this in mind, I urge you to vote, try to reconsider the allocations of the budget for the, for Westford Music at Westford Academy and to also both fund and fill the one point four FTE again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madarika. My name is Elena Almeida and I'm in eighth grade at Blanchard Middle School. The three of us and the students behind us feel the same way about the budget issues regarding music at WA. I've been playing music since I was three. I had hopes of pursuing a profession involving music, but with all the changes in custom music programs, I don't know if that is still possible. We have come here tonight to show the layers of our schools that the students in Westford care about having quality music programs. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm super supportive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll take somebody from Zoom while you guys sign in. If you're unmuted on Zoom, can you introduce yourself and give your address?
Praveen, Praveen? Apologies if I'm getting the name pronunciation wrong. Praveen?
That's what it looks like.
Yeah. Praveen? Can you hear us okay? Oh, there we go.
Sorry, did you say Praveen?
Yes, yes.
Oh, hi, sorry, I couldn't, I was, I'm actually in the car, so I couldn't hear you properly. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. I had a question regarding the, the way we cut the budgets. If I understand it correctly, looks like there is not, there are not many changes done to the physical education budget, while there were more cuts on the early intervention and, you know, some of the, you know, AP classes and other, other, other classes. So I was just curious on why we are not balancing the budget across all subjects, including physical education? And have you looked into, you know, saving some money from physical education and diverting it to other more severely affected subjects?
Okay, thank you. I'm going to speak to the PE.
Yeah, I would say in one point, I, I also want to make sure that it's, that there's a difference between the, the, the significant number of reductions that we needed to make for FY twenty-five, so we made them last year for this school year, versus the proposed budget that we're looking at for FY twenty-six. We're not looking to make additional cuts, like you had just mentioned, AP classes, for example. There are some AP classes that are not running this year. I just want to be clear to people that we're not making recommendations that additional AP classes would be cut for FY twenty-six. He did mention early intervention, so talking in terms of the MTSS model, things like that. That's something that we are continuing to evaluate this year. But in, it's really like the, the impact of the cuts last year that are, that we made last year that are impacting us this year, knowing that even hearing, you know, some of the, the questions and comments, people hoping that we might be able to restore some of those positions, I understand that. I just wanted to be clear that we're not recommending additional cuts for FY twenty-six for that, in, in that vein. In terms of physical education, you know, last year, this came up quite a bit. And based on that information, we looked, we did start looking at the graduation requirements as a whole at Westford Academy. And so one of the reasons in, in, in terms of why PE wasn't impacted in the same way that other departments were, was primarily because of the number of students who are enrolled in the classes. And so the class sizes alone didn't warrant making any changes there. Now, then philosophically, the questions that many people are asking is, okay, well then why are those classes so, so enrolled? And it's because of the requirements that we have in place. So that's the, that's the other part of that conversation that we're having. And even when the, the graduation requirement working group, the committee, when they looked at the, you know, making a proposal to the school committee, which they, which they have now done, that didn't include anything that would, would have a, a significant impact on the budget specifically. They did make a recommendation that there would be a reduction of two-point-five credits in PE, but, but the recommendation at this time is that that wouldn't take place until the following school year, so that the staff would be able to start to prepare for the changes that this would require. But that's the rationale for why the proposed budget that you see for FY twenty-six does not include reductions to the PE department.
And can I follow that up with, one question that I believe we got in email was why the PE and Health Department budget increase is more than other departments?
Yeah. Yeah, I can answer that. That question came up as well, too. The increase that anybody would see right now for FY twenty-six is contractual in terms of, it's not an increase in staffing at all, but we did have a larger number of teachers in, well, first of all, it's, it's also the, the proportion of the number of people in that department, right? So a couple of members of the PE department received master's degrees and/or additional coursework beyond their master's degree. So our contract allows for, we call them lane changes, so step changes take place as, as teachers, you know, with, with, as, with longevity, as teachers are working with us each year, you know, they'll move up a, a step. Lane changes take place if somebody goes from a bachelor's degree to say a master's degree, it'd be a, a new, a new column in which they would be able to, well, for their salary. And so what you're seeing is an increase because, you know, there are individuals who are receiving the, the negotiated increase to the teacher's salary. And in addition, they have done the work to advance their degree, to advance their, their credentials, if you will, that qualifies them for additional salary. So it's not a change in the, in budgeting, I mean, it's not a change in staffing, it's a contractual obligation change in supporting the salaries of the staff that we have.
Yeah, and then on the other side, you might have someone who is in a high staff that might be retiring.
Yep. And, and be replaced by somebody who is not necessarily, doesn't have as much experience, who wouldn't have the same salary scale. So that'll happen, you'll see that across all departments, but I think because people are, are concerned and people are looking at it, I understand why if somebody then looks at the PE line item and sees an increase, they would think, oh, they've increased the staffing there. But that's not what this is. And you, you could see that same type of change in, in many of the line items in terms of the, the ways in which the salaries are broken down across the entire district.
We'll take you guys next. Did you just sign in?
Yes.
Thanks.
So I'm Isabella Hesse, I live at thirty-eight Chamberlain Road and I'm a senior at Westford Academy and I want to talk about music. So I have been in the orchestra since my freshman year, so I'm now on my fourth year of being involved in the orchestra program at Westford Academy. I'm the president of the orchestra, I've been very involved with music at WA for all my four years. And I want to talk about kind of the reasons why, I wanted to kind of ask about the reasons why, bringing up again, that the, that the staffing was brought from two-point-oh to one-point-oh, because, so I know there's been talk about like demand for the class and I kind of want to shed some light onto why there may not have been as much demand in recent years. So I came into orchestra at a very bad time, coming into my freshman year. We were coming out of COVID and talking to many students, more than I can count. A lot of them did quit being involved in music and that's not just orchestra, band and chorus, too, because of having to take classes over Zoom, because of only being able to do it once every couple of weeks. So, you know, I'm one of five seniors in the orchestra right now, but our younger classes who aren't coming in to the music department with this kind of experience are much bigger. I think we have somewhere around twenty sophomores and I think the number for freshmen is closer to thirty. And, I mean, personally, I can only see that number increasing as we continue to come out of COVID. So I think in the future, there's going to be a lot more demand for those music classes. And I think it's unsustainable to be only thinking about enrollment now, when there's a very likely chance that enrollment's going to increase. As of right now, I did some research, I believe I presented these numbers last year when I spoke about the budget two and a half override. But around twenty percent of students at Westford Academy were enrolled in music and another twenty percent enrolled in theater, according to the town website. And so I think it's, especially cutting more from our budget this year, I think is a disservice to all of the music students that have been committed and all of the music students who are going to be newly enrolling in music programs as they move up into the high school. So I just, like personally, I don't really understand why that's being cut. I think music is incredibly important, it's taught me more than any class I've taken at WA, I can say that with full certainty. So I did just want to kind of ask that we reconsider where our budget is going and consider, you know, the future of the music department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Maria Ruther, I live on eighty-three Parker Street and I'm a sophomore at WA. Similar to Isabella, I've been involved in music my entire life, started orchestra at third grade and was hooked, couldn't quit. I agree with the reason that it's been so low. I mean, my experience in middle school with orchestra was so not normal, like I did not know a lot of the members of my orchestra until eighth grade, considering I only saw their faces on Zoom. And as you can imagine, playing in an ensemble when we're all in little boxes doesn't quite work correctly. So that causes so much discouragement in your future for music when the whole point in music is to bring people together and you're not together. I agree with Isabella, we're doing a lot of things in orchestra board, I'm involved in orchestra board as well, to try to lift up the younger generations. We have something planned in February for, where us high school students are going down to the middle schools, going down to elementary schools, to kind of show them what they can be a part of, just because it hasn't been what it should be. And I agree that keeping just one person in charge of all these people, especially because we're seeing growth in the freshman class, is not fair to him. He does so much, considering like marching band, salsa band, there's like a million different bands and then, which is amazing. And it's hard when us orchestra students, we used to have troubadours, we couldn't start that for months this year because of marching band, just little, it's not his fault and it's one person with a million things on his plate. And I just think that if we had another person, we could achieve the level of excellence that we have in our academics and music, because those things do coexist perfectly. Like it's shown that students who are involved in music are also very academically driven. And I believe that if we do put more effort into our music, it'll show up in our academics and likewise, the children who are doing well in academics also do well music-wise. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question is clear.
I did have somebody, but they've put their hand down, so.
We, I don't think we, oh, we do?
Yeah.
Okay.
They just put their hand up, I don't know.
Why don't we go with you, James?
Great, my name is James Winder, I live in Seven Swallow Drive. Firstly, I'd just like to say this question comes in good faith and with gratitude to the people who work in the school system, especially those of you who volunteer your time. Recognizing that constant budget cutting rapidly erodes morale, professional commitment and general confidence, I'm interested to know what the sort of five-year or more longer-term strategy is to make Westford schools both effective and sustainable. For example, a strategy might be, you know, we believe that the early grades are most critical to laying an academic foundation, so we'll do everything we can to fund a twenty-to-one child-to-teacher ratio in lower grades, even if that means not offering certain high school electives. Or on the flip side, you might decide the most important external measure of a school system is the number of electives offered to high school students, so we will fund those even if it means a higher child-to-teacher ratio in the lower grades. I don't have a clear view of what the twenty-thirty vision for the school system is, and right now, it feels like everything is under threat. This gives the sense of a general degradation of today's school system, rather than a refocusing of resources to where they matter most. With prop two and a half in place, the town has a good idea of what budgets will be for the foreseeable future. From what I understand, that's basically the purpose of it. However, with the school system, however, the school system cannot afford to operate as did historically, including being unable to perform routine maintenance and running up against fiscal, fiscal cliffs. Given that we already know this to be the case, could you please articulate the strategy that guides resource allocation within the school system? And, you know, how should we expect Westford schools to look in, for example, five years' time?
Thank you. I think those are.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were going to say something.
No.
Those are weighty conversa, weighty discussions that we wrestle with as a committee all the time, feel free to jump in. I think it seems like we have tried to balance and look for efficiencies, but I feel like what I'm hearing in general and under your question, too, is that what I, I think you said something about, like it feels like everything is under threat and I really like that wording resonated with me, because that's what I think we're hearing in our emails and in tonight, is everybody is aware that the budget continues to be sort of less-than-level service for the last couple of years and it, so it feels like a thousand paper cuts. And at some point, how do you keep going with that? And at what point do you, I mean, I think the override last year was our attempt to try to right this, right the track and right-size the revenue and the community spoke with their votes, unfortunately. And so what we have faced this year is the means that we have to find efficiencies and, and right-size by enrollment and stuff, but the competing priorities throughout K to twelve, I think is, I don't have an answer to, to clearly balance or to clearly prioritize something over another.
And just that number that we always talk about.
This is all seven of us.
Is that like eighty percent of our budget is people.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the mu, if, if we don't impact the music department and other, the interventionists or the middle school support, like somebody gets, somebody takes a hit somewhere. So it's like trying to, what, like you said. So it's like trying to, like you said, build that balance. So when we're talking about eighty percent, and that twenty percent, I mean, I'll admit, when I first came on school committee, I was like, they must be spending a fortune on paper. Where is this, you know, these budget lines, the simple supplies? It's just not happening. You know, it really is, the majority of it is people.
I think what I hear you saying is, you're saying like, we're focusing even in this meeting on the micro details, right? Like, there's a point four here, and there's, you know, there's imbalance over here. And what you're asking is like, what is our broader philosophy?
Yeah.
And the problem is that last year, when the override didn't pass, I think there was a very, there was a very big surprise, I think, because I think there was an expectation that the community was going to support it. And so I think unfortunately what happened was it kind of pushed us all to work together to balance a budget that, in every meeting that we discussed, was really the most undesirable outcome. And I think that even though that happened, and we're trying to grapple with it even in the overflow into this year, there's a very strong commitment of all the volunteers on this committee and all the folks in the school to continue to deliver a quality education that advances justice and equity and really holds up like the arts as well as serves our both, our special needs students as well as our honor students. It's just that right now, we're kind of grappling with more of an urgent situation. And we're expecting the inauguration for an individual who may even eliminate the Department of Education. So it does feel like a lot of things are under threat right now. And I think that we are both trying to improve outcomes for kids by having a school start time committee. I think that that's a way to think about how can we maximize things for both our high schoolers and what we know about brain science. And so I think there still is planning that's happening with our committee on trying to make sure that we're delivering the best services, even in terms of like, how do we transport, the amount of time that these folks are spending on like just bus routes. So I think there, we are, our overarching mission is still to deliver a quality education for all of our students. And so that hasn't changed. It's just that unfortunately, you're right, that we are in a climate where financial realities are a little bit stark right now.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I just feel like there's, you know, I get that we sort of faced an emergency and kind of it seems like across the whole system, everyone had to take a bit of a hit and sort of absorb that. But I, you know, you get everyone expressing an angle and everyone, you know, we just heard a lot about music. You heard a lot about sports.
Yes.
Everyone has their point of view of what's important.
Yes.
I just feel like it would be easier for you guys to make hard calls with a, with the trade-offs clearly expressed. So if, for example, you say we're gonna, we can't fund the music department because we believe that, you know, you know, reading intervention is critical to the health of our students in the lower grades. It would be a bitter pill to swallow, but it may be easier, you know, over the longer term.
Right, but I think to be frank though, like, even the question that Elizabeth asked about, like, where did these numbers go? And, you know, we had these meetings last year. Like, they weren't really popularly attended, but we had meetings where people went through every last student that was seated in those classes and like why those decisions were made. I think that unfortunately, a lot of folks, when those meetings were happening, were expecting that the override was going to pass, but they're all on YouTube and you can watch them now.
Yeah.
You know, like, so I think there was a lot of conversation about, a lot of thoughtful conversation about why those decisions were made. I just think folks didn't think that it was really going to happen that way.
No, no, I don't want to make any impression that I think these decisions are taken lightly. There's no impression I'm saying it all. I just, sometimes it's hard to like, like I said, to have, imagine it all and imagine like what we're trading off over, like I said, five years.
Yeah, yeah. No, I completely.
To that, to that, oh, sorry, go ahead, Sean.
I, this has been raised a few times, at least in my tenure on the school committee, is, is, well, shouldn't we have a hierarchy as to what we're willing to sacrifice over something else? And the problem with that, I think that that line of thinking works in the private industry, right? Here's what we're willing to eliminate first. When you do it in the school context, it, there's people associated with this. Certain people are passionate about certain departments. Certain people are passionate about certain electives. So for us to, and I'm not saying this is what you're asking for, but I guess my fear would be if we're making a hierarchy as to, you know, this department is most important to us over this department. It's just, it's just strange slippery slope that we can't go down. And the reality of it is, is that we're seven individuals, and it's the administration's job to say, okay, well, here's what the town's allocating for us. And to meet that allocation, here's what we need to do. So they're making those calls behind the scene, and it's our job to articulate, is this right? Is this wrong? Is this something that we're willing to agree with the administration on that it can go next year? So I guess that would be my concern. I think you're absolutely right. There should be some sort of vision, and I mean, unfortunately, this is democracy. The reality of it is, is that each one of us could be elected or recalled at any point. You know, like, it's every, there's peaks and droves to an elected board like this. So each one of us comes in with something that we're passionate about. For me, that's been class size, and I think that the administration has stayed true to that in keeping the class sizes within, pretty close to what we've been successful with. But that's just my view on it.
Just to note on what you said, Sean, to articulate it, I think, you know, to be mindful of is that if we kind of come around with this vision of, like, that hierarchy, it means essentially people are working in departments feeling like, at any point, their job could be cut. Like, oh, I know this department is the next on the chopping block if X, Y, Z happens. And that's a really hard condition to put on any of our staff members, to think that at any moment in time, if the budget goes in any way wrong, that they're next. I mean, and that's, so it would be a hard thing if you feel like if we've articulated what our kind of hierarchy is, that we would have staff members who don't necessarily feel as valued as other departments or as, because I think they're all as valued. I mean, they're all equal, to be honest.
I don't know what you were going to say next, but I just want to jump in and say that I want to almost zoom out too, because what I took away from your comments was a little bit of like, if it's this thousand paper cuts, what goes next year and what goes the year after that? And at what point have we looked back and we don't even recognize the school system anymore? The orchestra, like, and you could pick multi-age, right? Like, you could pick all these things that you can remember existing, and we're just keep living under the Prop two and a half constraints. I guess I would say too that I think we are doing a really good job at trying to use our balances, right, in strategic ways. And I would encourage people to pay attention to the larger town budget. There are conversations happening about pay-as-you-throw, which would help subsidize the town funds that go towards waste disposal. There's conversations about, there have been previous conversations about other ways for new revenue, MBTA, community zoning, all of those help funnel more funds towards the school department or in general, that can be divvied up in different ways. So I don't think it's, when I think to the future, I worry about the school budget, but it's not just only within our control of the seven of us in administration, right? It is a bigger conversation with the town partners.
I want to second the, sorry, the spending, the balances. You know, finance and administration have kind of essentially formulated that five-year plan, right? That we can kind of weather some of the storm, take some hits, but still minimizing those. But the problem is, at the end of that five-year, is when we hit a fiscal cliff again. I think by responsibly spending those down, it does position us a little bit better to then turn around and ask. But I think the idea of all of a sudden looking back and saying, this isn't the school district we, we remember or want, is definitely a concern. Full transparent, you know, I was at that table last year, speaking very passionately about the music. I'm very glad to hear that it's still being passionately discussed. You know, and then after the override failed, we had AP students and parents here passionately discussing and pleading for those. So it is, unfortunately, that reality of we do have to pin, we have to weigh the options. And it's, as I understand it, the decisions at the academy specifically are based on data of enrollment. And, you know, similar to some of the concerns that were raised about, you know, enrollment being based on COVID years, you know, that was also raised last year. So that is something we have to keep an eye on going forward, right? But yes, so it is, it's based on what the student choices are as far as giving a priority. And I think that's a good start to a formula. But yes, it can't be the full formula. And I did want to second the fact that we are, it's not just the school budget. It is police, fire, you know, roadways, all of that. While it's not discussed in this particular meeting, it is part of the whole formula, so.
Did you want to add anything?
I did. I was just going to say, I think, and again, those are some really great questions. And yes, heavy and meaty, right? But one of the things I also wanted to remind everybody of is that we do have our strategic plan, right? So we have a very, very well-articulated strategic plan. While it does not specifically discuss the budget, because that's something that we decided to not include in the strategic plan, was the actual development of the budget. But we did, we do continue to look at our plan, what our goals are, and when we're developing our budget, which I think is one of those reasons why it's important that we don't just pit one thing against the other or that hierarchy, because it's similar to a lot of what Marisol said as well. The things that we're committed to, we continue to be committed to within all of the classroom environments that we're creating. Even if some of those environments need to get a little bit larger, right, than what we would like, we're committed to keeping them. And one of the things that we looked at last year and we're still continuing to look at is, can we manage to develop a budget where we are still providing as many opportunities for students as possible? Because one of the things we could have done would be eliminate programs. Eliminate programs to then keep your resources in another program. And at this point, we think that that's not the right thing to do. Now, the paper cut part is disturbing because you could get to a point where you don't recognize these programs anymore, which would be, that would be very bad, but we are continuing to pay attention to that. The other thing I just wanted to add was, and you both spoke to it, which is the NGFG, the Non-General Fund Guide. One of the things that I tried to articulate in my presentation, I need to be mindful of continuing to articulate it, which is the offsets that we are proposing that the school committee consider. Jenny has done a phenomenal job saying, okay, you could sustain these offsets for three to four years, which is putting us at between FY twenty-eight and FY twenty-nine, which means then it's gone. Which also what I said, and I said it in the presentation, so if somebody just reads it, they'll also see it. Other funding sources must be identified at that time. Now, I don't know of any other funding sources outside of changing the tax base and considering an override again, but there might be additional revenues so that maybe when we get to FY twenty-eight and FY twenty-nine, we don't need to go that route. But I want to make sure that we are clearly communicating that now, because I thought we did a good job communicating a year and a half in advance that we needed the override in the first place last year. So now, we heard clearly from people that they had concerns about the reserve accounts that we had. There were questions around it. We didn't have specific guidance as to the best way to use them. So we've now done that. We've developed that. And now the next time that we go to the town with an ask, we're going to have very clear information that's going to show that we have had this specific plan. So it's not the same type of, you know, plan that you're suggesting, which is saying, you know, the twenty-to-one or do you hold your high school as the, you know, as the, all of the electives that are there? But I think we have a clear strategy that I think we've remained committed to as a district and as we look at all of these things. And we are looking at the changes and the things that are being impacted, which is one of the reasons why we've looked at the data around the MTSS model, which is why we are now having a different recommendation for it. But we don't have other recommendations in the budget to make other reductions, right? So we're not looking to increase class sizes anyplace else. We're not looking to make any other cuts at the academy or any of those impacts. And we're going to see, okay, what can we do? Can we maintain this for a while? We don't think that this is what we want our future to be. But we're trying to make sure that we can still provide opportunities for students and as many opportunities that we've been providing pre-K through twelve.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Whoever's next can come and sign in, but we're going to switch to someone on Zoom.
I think it's Vidya.
You're being unmuted if your hand is raised, and please feel free to introduce yourself when you're able. Can you see like the mic turning?
Does it say Vidya? I think it's Vidya.
Vidya?
Yeah. Vidya, can you hear us? Yep, they're on mute.
Yes, I can hear. Can you hear me?
Yep. Just introduce yourself and your address. Thank you.
Thank you for taking my call. I'm Ranga Godavarti, and Vidya and I live at eleven Woodbury Drive. So first of all, I want to do first, you know, thank you all for all your efforts. And I appreciate that, you know, working with the budget in a constrained environment is very challenging. And we completely appreciate all the challenges you're doing in the balancing act it is. I just wanted to go back to the earlier comments that were made around the PE budget. And I understand from Dr. Chu the reasons for the changes or the no reductions in the PE or no efficiencies there and why they had to increase the budget there. But I also wanted to go back to the earlier comment, I think it was Michelle, who brought up the restrictive requirement of the two-point-five credits every year. So that's something that I just wanted to reiterate my concern as well. And I think what it has done is for many students who are, you know, were, in the past, were able to double up, you know, two of the PEs in a year so that they could open up a slot for taking on additional courses that they may have wanted to. That option not being there is restrictive. And so just wanted to request that again to see if there's any possibility of changing that. Or, you know, I think Michelle said that there was going to be a discussion on the graduation requirements for PE. I don't know if that was already mentioned. I may have missed that. But again, just trying to see, you know, do we need that or are there any discussions in trying to modify the graduation requirement? Thanks.
Yep, thank you. I think we could give a quick update on our, what's the next steps are for the gradu- so, because I heard two questions. One is about the PE budget, and one is about the sort of PE graduation requirements. So they are getting blurry, but I think they are separate. And just one, my opinion, but I think that the path for the graduation requirements review is a policy. So the policy subcommittee will be evaluating that with some, with input from the full committee over the next couple of weeks. I think you guys said maybe February, right? Or what's your timeline, do you think?
Well, I suppose kind of maybe to start the discussion when we have time on the.
So probably comes back to this full committee in February and then gets the policy review and comes back. So over the next couple of months, that is when we would welcome additional input on that change. Then there was a question about the PE budget. Did anyone catch it?
Just.
Just that it wasn't unchanged?
I think, I believe it was that he understood what.
He understood what I'd said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that he was really, the question, to me, I was hearing that it was our, the idea that there used to be flexibility where they could, oh my gosh, the word is just, thank you, defer a credit, which allowed them to do something. So I think his question was, is would we ever consider that again? Like, as we're talking about the requirements, that was the way that I interpreted.
Okay. I hope that update on the process for the graduation requirement speaks to that. Anyone, I want to. Anyone, I don't want to add anything?
No.
We'll switch to the microphone in the room. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ace Nguyen. I'm, live at one-seventy-six Grotton Road. I play violin for the orchestra and I play piano for the band. I am part of orchestra board and I wanted to start off by saying how grateful I am that orchestra even still exists as a program, even after like what the budget cut has taken from us. But if they continue to like take our money, change our teachers, and I'm saying on that fact about changing our teachers, cause I've heard from one of my peers that the reason why people have been leaving music ensembles is because there's too many like changes of teachers, specifically to orchestra. Because this is our fourth teacher that we've had in like four years. And like if we keep, and like if they keep taking and taking and taking, eventually there is going to be like a decrease in students in like orchestra specifically. And if we, and then we won't have enough people to run the program and then the program will eventually shut down. And orchestra and just music in general is a very big passion for me. I'm very committed. And as someone who has heard from a lot of other students, they're, they're pretty upset about how our other orchestra teacher has gotten like reassigned. And it's just really upsetting to me and to other students about how this change is going. And again, while I'm grateful that it still exists, it's really hard to accommodate for the students who see orchestra as a very different thing from band. And Mr. Sheckleton does have like a life outside of the music ensembles. He's a dad and he has a daughter. And like Thursday is his only free day usually, where he can like hang out with like his family and like spend time outside of school in the music ensembles. And I would really like it if we had another teacher to share those responsibilities with him so that he can have like more stuff off his plate rather than on his plate. I'm not a good speaker, but I just wanted to like voice my opinion and maybe possibly make a change towards this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your concerns. Go ahead. Yep. Do we have anybody?
No.
Hi, my name is Migno. I'm from fifteen Blake Hill. Again, thank you for everybody, for everything you do. I became interested in the school committee last year with all the decisive, how it made the town very decisive. Some of the points have all even raised here. Just listening to the thoughts of what people have been saying here, like one of the biggest things, have you done, the biggest fear for me or change or their threat, whatever you're talking about is how is it gonna impact the school, you know, graduating students and then the impact with finding colleges or elsewhere? Or what they do next in their career, right? Whether they go to college or nothing. Have you done, um, I have, you know, my mind, everybody has different opinions. I speak to people in the committee, but have you, has the school committee done like sort of like an evaluation to see how the, but the budget cuts which happened last year have impacted? And is it really true that hey, the class sizes, you know, AP classes, all the things that we've spoken about? I'm hearing music is a big one right here. So are there anything else that we have heard, we have done to, that I can, I could, wanted to hear from you folks? One of the biggest things I came, I was also PE, right? Like the two-point-five credit, which not for this fiscal year, but for the next. It puts it in such a way, we'll have like three semesters and we'll have seven-point-five credits. It makes very difficult for folks to do the graduating requirements. I think that's gonna be, we can talk about it in February. But that'll also help reduce the PE budgeting, right? So that's another thing I was, was gonna ask. So there's so many things that I'm sure, I just wanted to hear back from school, like hey, have you done any evaluation and feedback? And then based on that, we can go back and look at all the other efficiency across all the different departments and rework.
Yes, so I'm, I'm hearing like what's our review, reflection process for budget impacts? I think some of that happens at the leadership level too, right? And I, I think some, um, some updates have come to us, right? Is there anything else?
I mean, I would say like you, you've heard anecdotally, you've heard, you've, people have emailed you and you've heard different things. You've, you've been able to see some of the different impacts. And we've visited buildings as well too. We talk about it at, at the leadership level, right? So when we're looking at the, and it, it stems from even data team meetings that we'll have to the, the, as the schools are talking about how they're best supporting the students. And it, and that looks different at every single grade level too. But as we're talking about it, as we're talking about the FY twenty-six budget, we were very clearly reflecting on the FY twenty-five budget as well too. And looking to see, okay, well, what those impacts have, have been in terms of whether it was a change in class sizes or just even a change in the way in which some of the resources were, were distributed to various classes as well too. But in, in terms of like a formal evaluation, typically the development of the FY twenty-six budget is looking at where we're at with the FY twenty-five budget. But I, I can't say that there was a, you know, we've done a survey or, or anything specifically to, to get, oh, oh, I guess a wider sense. We've just been checking in with the buildings and, you know, teachers are very vocal at, at the building level and with their, with their administration as well too. So I would, I would say that that would be the, the, the most specific feedback that we've received.
I, I wouldn't mind just, it's actually something that had been kind of on my mind over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, getting feedback through the stack group and feedback through parents. You know, I kind of wonder as we get towards the end of this, of this school year, that we do have a more kind of formal conversation on, um, maybe some like impacts that have, you know, worked somewhat or, you know, we, and some that maybe we need to review. And again, it might be worth that, that conversation, um, kind of before you start building the FY twenty-seven budget. Cause I think it would be helpful for everybody to kind of just reassess where we're at. You know, almost to James's point as well earlier, to kind of at least kind of see, you know, put us all on the same page of.
Take stock.
Take stock.
Yeah.
And kind of see, okay, how does this lead us into FY twenty-seven? Cause I don't doubt for the next few years, we're in a year by year, um, you know, basis.
And I, I think part of what's like unsaid is that, um, we don't, especially with the FY twenty-five budget. And I think administration does a good job of, of having the slides with a predict, a, a projection for what they are saying the impact will be. Not many of these are, are without impact.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I mean, even when we talked about last year with the WA adjustments, you predicted about how different levels and language would be combined. We had, I thought we had conversations about what that, what, how a teacher does that. What does that mean? What, what are some trade-offs that come with that type of learning environment? So, um, I, I think it's, it's happened a little bit piecemeal, but it hasn't been like a.
Formal.
It was part of the root cause analysis as well though too. Like now they think about, cause you're right, like we didn't have a specific evaluation about the budget. But even as we're doing the equity audit, question, they're looking at our budget and the budget allocations. And we've had questions, there was one of the tables was specifically, you know, looking at, at that type of information. So that's additional pieces that help inform that and will help even what you're talking about Catherine, right? So then it'll be a question of, okay, as we get all that information, as we, and move from the district level to then the building level, that might put us in a better position to say, okay, well, what questions don't we have information about? And should we be asking, you know, more specific questions about budget related things in the spring?
Yeah.
And it's also hard because we make a decision at town meeting in March on a budget that's gonna start in July. School doesn't start, so we don't actually start seeing these impacts until September. And now we're back here in December. And you're, in, in some cases, the classes are just really getting into it right now. So, um, so it, it's, it's definitely important. And it, it's something that I have said all along is tracking those unintended consequences, right? But we won't know for a year and a half really, you know, until we're already, we've already approved next year's budget. So it's, yeah, so, yeah, it is, we, we need to know before we get into twenty-seven discussions how students' experience was, how teachers' experience was with the multi-tiered language, let's say, you know?
I can speak to that. And I'm sure the students in the room right now will agree with me. Budget conversations have been, have surfaced more than I've ever seen them. Like, I mean, obviously I've only been in high school for four years. But, um, they, in the past six, five months that we've been in school, it's a conversation almost daily. Even so, like I have conversations in my classes with my teachers too. It's, it definitely weighs down on the student environment. And I think all of us have seen budget changes in the past year, whether it's orchestra, band, whether it's math, like languages, sciences, like it's everywhere unfortunately. And obviously, I, I've kind of been in some of these conversations and I see it and I understand that this, this like chronic dilemma, like truly. But I definitely know that if you were to do some sort of survey or questionnaire for teachers and students alike, I can tell you that you'd get immense feedback. They're very passionate people and like people showing up here tonight. If you put out something that was even more general, like you would have so much, so many responses. And I think it would be really beneficial too. I mean, obviously we had the school's, um, start time survey and I think we learned a lot. And I think that's just like the tip of the iceberg for what students are passionate about. I think you'd be surprised at how much the budget is, is talked about and how, and the opinions of students. And, and I mean, I know, that's why I sit on this committee. I love to give feedback and there's plenty of other students that do too on like what the experience is with combined language levels and with all kinds of budget cuts. And I'm just saying that like it would definitely be beneficial, I think, to do something like that this, um, spring for FY twenty-seven, if that's in the cards.
Sounded like Tom, you were making a case for a later town meeting.
I don't know, there's challenges with later town meetings too, just so you know.
It used to be in May, but the weather was so nice that a lot of people didn't go.
Yeah, it is, it is a hard timeline. Thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, my name is, sorry.
What, does anyone have something that they've seen in an email that we haven't touched on yet? I know we're trying to triage and, and speak to and represent those. So while we give people a chance to decide who wants to speak next, if there's something. Okay, I'll give you another minute. I thought it was on the spot.
I mean, since we were discussing it, maybe now's a good time to talk about what the next steps are after tonight and what the community can expect from us.
That's a good point. Yep, so, um, so tonight is our budget hearing. We are scheduled for a vote on the school budget on January, Tuesday, January twenty-first. That is scheduled that way in advance of our first budget department review with FinCom. That hap-, so for anyone that, that doesn't know, the town finance committee reviews each town department, each town department budget on Thursday nights throughout January. Those, they're virtual or hybrid, they're very publicly accessible meetings. And we, it's been all part of our practice to attend that with an approved budget. So that's why our vote is the twenty-first in advance of that review on the twenty-third. That's the school budget. And then that, all that goes to town meeting with all the other town budgets, which is March twenty-second? Somebody have that handy?
March twenty-second, Saturday, March twenty-second.
Thank you. Town meeting is Saturday, March twenty-second at WA, starts at nine AM. That is where the whole complete town and school budget gets approved. And that's hopefully speaks to the process of steps. So welcome, introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Emily Smith and I live at thirty-five Burn Ave. I'm a product of high school, of a high school band. And band had an incredible impact on who I am today. Like the music teachers at WA, I too had an incredible band teacher. But my school lost him when too many demands were placed on him. I fear that without providing more support to the orchestra, we may burn out our WA music educator, who's a valuable educator in this community. My daughter's in sixth grade and she already talks about playing for him in the WA band. And these extracurricular music groups that you heard a lot of the WA students talk about earlier can't typically be picked up by a science teacher or a school counselor. These music educators have training, they know how, I, I'm an educator myself. And I, while I can play the clarinet, I can't stand up in front of some students after school and conduct a jazz band or a pit orchestra or the troubadours. And so I just ask that when you think about the budget and you think about the future, that you think about what we're doing to our staff and that while it might seem like just a point for a position, that, um, you know, it, it is somebody and we definitely don't want to lose this person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, we have, yep, we have one question just I spotted on, um, that came through to us. A parent who said how their middle schooler at Stony Brook only has PE once a week, but their WA high schooler has PE four times a week. Don't know if.
Sorry, this is, this is in an email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the question is, middle school is four times a week and high school is?
No, they're saying the, the other way, that middle school is on, is PE only once a week. But at the high school, it's four times a week.
But that runs full year as well, right?
It's based on the, the, the schedule, um, the PE classes at the middle school level are part of the specialist's rotation. And so they meet at, once every six days. The PE classes at the academy will be one of your semester classes. And so it would meet more times within their rotating schedule, but only for ha-, only for that semester and not for the full year. There are more, it is true that the, the class sections, if you count up the number of times in which a student is, has a PE class at Westford Academy, it's less than what the, they have at the middle school. And that's a question that's come up just recently, a, a parent actually asked that question. And I'll say as a formal middle school principal, knowing that it was one of our rotations, I can't say that I ever counted it to see how it compared to the other grade levels. But I think it's an, it is an interesting question. But at the same time, the PE classes at the high school, regardless of the discussion around the graduation requirements, are following the same schedule that other classes are following. So to me, it's, it's a matter of a difference in the schedules. It's not necessarily a difference in prioritizing one over the other. But I think it's an interesting question. And again, having spent a lot of time with middle schoolers, I would advocate for them to have more opportunities
Five days a week.
For activity.
Thanks. There's nobody on the line. Okay. Yep, go ahead.
Patty Long. For Birchwood, um, even though I have all these papers, I actually really wasn't planning on talking today, but I, I feel like I should. So I remember talking, speaking with you guys last year about the budget. Took us on a lot of tangents, a lot of reasons that I think why we're meshing the graduation requirements with the budget is because probably of me, because of the, the conversations that we've had in this, in this setting. And I just wanted to just talk about how I feel like it makes sense why we didn't make the changes last year. But I feel like we know a lot more now. We've done a lot of research and when I say we, it's the graduation requirements committee, it's myself. And as I try to educate myself about what other schools do. And it's obvious that other schools are, are very, with the same graduation requirements as WA, can deliver PE with half the budget and half the staff. I don't get the sense that we've explored that route thoroughly. I think there are options that exist where, um, we can deliver PE to all the students, but deliver it and follow, uh, without, without modifying our existing, uh, block schedule and also keep the graduation requirements the same. And so I kind of wanted to talk about something I've been thinking about. I know this, it's, it's a proposal that I'm not sure if the school is considered and I, I hope they do consider. So, um, just to give some background, I know a lot of you actually don't have experience with students at WA. I'm sure you've heard about the block schedule. It essentially has, there's seven blocks, right? And every day they have five of the seven blocks. And, um, based on the enrollment and class data that was shared, shared last year, and this is an email that I sent all of you guys, so if you wanted to look at the data, it's there. Based on the enrollments from last year, most of the blocks actually have four concurrent PE classes. And, um, each. And each class is taught by one teacher. The cap, they're capped at around, I think, 31 students, it looked like. And two classes actually meet in the auxiliary gym, and two of them meet in the main gym. Those are large spaces, just FYI. So my proposal, that I'd like you to kind of think about, is increasing the PE class size to 31, from 31 students to 62, and split the classes into two groups, A and B. Now, this class would then only have one teacher, just to be clear. So it's now one teacher for 62 students. Splitting the class into two groups, and on PE day one, you've got one group who's actively working with the instructor, and on whatever they would like to work on, some sort of instructional PE. And while Group A is doing that, Group B is participating in self-guided physical activity in the same space. So we already have that today. We've got 60 students in a classroom, in the gym today. 30 students are working with one teacher, 30 students are working with another, but what I'm suggesting is now we've got one teacher, still two groups. One group is doing their own self-directed, they're in high school, they can self-direct their own PE, they can stretch, they can run, they can play basketball, they can do all sorts of things on their own with a teacher in that vicinity, and then the other, the other students are actually engaging with the teacher. This approach is very similar, I think, to what we've done to the rest of this, to the rest of the departments, where basically asking a department to combine sections, or asking them to potentially do something different than they hadn't done before. This is, in my opinion, a little less complicated than what we've asked the other departments to do, and they were asked to do it in less than six months' time. I think that's pretty much the, does anyone have any questions? Because, no, I know, again, that you guys don't have WA students. I don't know if our WA representative...
I've had WA students.
Sorry, WA students, I apologize.
I had two kids graduate.
Yep, no, I apologize. WA students that have gone through the school system with the current PE policy. That would be the seniors. The seniors this year are the first, the first class that was impacted by the removal of deferrals, removal of waivers, and requiring them to take PE every single year. So I'm just curious what your perspective, actually, if you guys don't mind me asking them directly, and putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
What you think of this? Because, yeah, and I don't want to add my own, I'll let you.
I guess I'll go first. So, like, you mentioned how you would have, like, two groups, like, an A and a B, where one teacher is focusing with, like, the first 30, 31 students, while the other 31 are...
62. 62, you said one section, under your proposal, 62 students?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted you. Why don't I let you finish? I apologize.
So 62 students would be under one group, and then 62 under another.
No, no, sorry.
No, 31 and 31.
31 and 31.
One teacher, 62.
Yes.
Got it, understood. Got it, yes, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you.
So 62 with one teacher, where you have 31 that are working directly with the teacher, and you have the other 31 in the same space, but either, I mean, they can do a DLT, they can do any sort of activity that is, you know, whatever WA decides is a, is a suitable self-directed PE activity that they can do on their own.
Curious idea. I've never heard that before. And I, like, I, that's very interesting. I definitely, I kind of like the idea. I definitely find myself some days where I'm like, I do not want to play tennis, or I do not want to, like, play a certain activity that's, that's being taught by a teacher, and I definitely think that 62 kids, I mean, I am not a gym teacher, and I'm not, like, trying to assume what a gym teacher has, but I mean, I don't get homework in gym, so I'm not sure, again, I don't know what the PE teachers do as for grading, or like, what that responsibility is. But I definitely see, like, 62 kids as being potentially manageable, maybe, from a student's perspective. And I like the idea that you kind of have, like, flex, that you could have flexibility for whatever you want to do physically, but then also on Sundays have a curriculum, like a structured, I think that really kind of satisfies people who like the structured curriculum, but some who obviously want kind of flexibility in what they can do and what physical, physically, like, levels, I guess, physical levels during a class. It's, yeah, I definitely, the gym requirement has, has been tough for me over the four years. I definitely have found myself restricted by it and, and not always happy with it, because I, I do participate in, in a, I did participate in two varsity sports at one point, and having the gym requirement is definitely, like, a slight burden with my curriculum and wanting to take other classes. That sounds like an interesting idea, and I'd be, be curious to see what else, like, what could come of that, and if that's something that would be, could be done. But I definitely do, the only problem I would see with it is this, the 31 kids that wouldn't be with the, the curriculum area, like, the, the free PE, or the, the, you know, more freer area of PE. I would be curious to see, like, how that teacher could kind of manage supervising all 62 kids, like, whether the kids are sitting down, or they actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, teenagers are not a big fan of being told what to do. And so I'd be curious to see how that could be sustained. But I definitely think that conversation is interesting, because there are 60, there are, like you said, 62 kids in the main gym at once, and sometimes the activities do blend. So I'm curious to see what that would look like, to have kind of two different areas and more flexibility. Thank you.
So while I haven't had a W...
Daniel didn't get a chance. It's Dan, your turn.
She did kind of mention what I was going to say about, like, kind of managing the, both, like, all 62 students at once, and there's kind of the issue of safety. There's a lot of, like, I, I know personally, my current PE teacher right now, she really emphasizes safety, and that's, like, really important to her, and that, and that's how it should be. And so if you have, like, 31 students with one teacher, while the 31 maybe aren't necessarily not supervised, but don't have as much intent, attention as the rest of the 31 students, you know, there could be other things going on that the teacher might not be aware of, and that could potentially be like a safety concern, as well as just, maybe I'm just speaking for myself here, but a lot of students aren't really focused for, like, if they're left unattended for an hour, they're not, probably not going to be doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're going to wander off, like, walk the halls, do a bunch of stuff that they just shouldn't be doing. And so that kind of raises an issue there.
I think that's a really good point. I guess, when I think about this as a, as a option that allows the class to grow and shrink, as it needs to, I think, if it is, has, if it has grown to 62, let's say, there are less expensive resources that can provide that level of supervision that we're concerned about. It's something I hadn't thought of, because, well, I should have thought of it, because I know, I have a teenager, I have two, and would I, yeah. So it's a very good point, but I think that that is addressable with a different type of resource. So like I said, I mean, these, this is something that other schools are already doing. It is something that, it's an option that wouldn't require a change to the current PE requirement, because it would remain the same, and it would work within the existing block schedule. The other thing I did want to ask, well, actually, I'll just, is there any, I mean, did anyone else have comments about that?
Yeah, it sounded like...
Do you know of any other districts that are employing this half-and-half model right now?
So Acton Boxborough teaches 1,600 students with half the staff of WA, and then half the budget, of course. Their schedule, their program of studies, is a quarter, it's a, it's a semester schedule every other day. So this is essentially that. But within the workings of our graduation policy, I don't have theirs in front of me directly, but I believe that they still say that they have a one semester PE class. It's just within their program of studies, that you, when you dig, you're like, which is what I did, because I saw their FTE count, I saw their student count, and I just was like, how are they delivering PE to this many students with this few resources? And it's because that nuance of how they deliver it is in their program of studies. It meets every other day.
I wonder if they have the same number of FTEs serving those, that time, just divided in different areas, so.
Does somebody have 62 students in a classroom or not?
Right, whether it's, you know, they're at a DLT with a different teacher. My concern with that type of model would be, what message does it send to PE teachers that we don't want any other teacher to have 25 kids, but you're now responsible for 62?
Well, there's a huge difference between PE curriculum and other classrooms, specifically even just the class size itself.
I would just challenge, it's, it's phys ed and health now, the standards have been a 25-year update since 1999, so phys ed blends into that whole domain, and I think the phys ed department at WA, much like all of our schools in Westford, are pouring into those standards right now and trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I have them.
It's a huge charge, yeah. So not only the standards, I think about students on IEPs and 504s, how do they have their needs met? When you have 31 students getting instruction and 31 guiding on their own, some of those are attention-based, some of those are timing and response, and the list goes on. So, as, as an educator, I've got a lot of concerns with that model, but I appreciate bringing something new to the table, and something for us to pour over, yeah.
I think, and I don't want to bring in the possibility of graduation requirement changes, because I know that pivots the conversation. I do, however, want to remind the group that the policies that did change for WA when deferrals and waivers were removed never came in front of the school committee. It was not a graduation policy change. It was a program of studies change. Similarly, if you look at all the schools that do actually offer alternative options to PE, that is also not a graduation policy change. It is in their program of studies, it is not on their graduation requirements. If you look at their graduation requirements, it doesn't talk about sports substitution. It just says four semesters, or whatever their graduation requirements are. So this idea that we can't permit waivers, deferrals, or any sort of substitution without changing the graduation policy is actually not how other schools have done it, because it's not in their graduation policy. But I appreciate you guys listening to that. Oh, Valerie, you'll go on.
Well, it sounded like Mari had a point, too. I was going to say, I, I hear the hesitations and the concerns. What, what I appreciate, though, is that I think this is an area of our budget that is getting a lot of scrutiny and concern. We've heard different conversation, but related, we heard that, how hard it is to sort of make a scheduling change, which embedded in the graduation requirements recommendation was like a phase in, right, like, over a couple of years. So it's not, there, there doesn't seem to be a feasible way to turn something, make a switch for FY26 that would address some concerns in this budget, in that, in that department. So what appeals to me is that it, that the proposal is within our, within our systems, our existing systems. I share the same concerns, but about 62 kids, but I just want to acknowledge that there, this is an area of concern that has been brought up, our emails reflect that, and that I think the flexibility or creativity within the existing systems, you know, is there.
I would also caution that, you know, so right now, that, and again, it's great to have new perspectives brought in. That's the only way we grow, but my concern would be that we make this a potential model change for PE today, and now next year, oh, well, maybe we need to address the math department, and same, and then we're, we're back into basically COVID model, is what that ends up being, you know, in A and B groups. So I, I would just caution on setting any kind of precedent that might come back to bite us.
One thing I didn't mention, and it's just more for, since we are talking about money, Acton has been doing this for what appears to be 15 years. So 15 times, like, let's say, $200,000, our current, the new, the new budget for PE is $550,000, but let's go with $200,000. That's $3 million over the course of 15 years. So it's not, it's just, I mean, that number is startling, and it's, you've heard from a lot of students today, and about how they are not feeling heard, they're not getting the classes that they have always wanted to take, or are looking forward to taking. So I just, I'll leave it at that, at that. But I, but I do have a couple of other questions, if you guys don't mind. My other question is about e-learning. You know, you've heard students talk about orchestra, band, I mean, there are definitely happened classes that have been reduced this year, students that have been told no. I don't know how often you guys get a report of all the no's that students have been told at WA. Some no's come because of, obviously, the elimination of classes because of the override, some because of enrollment issues. And I think that it's important for this committee to know how many no's students are hearing, and to consider...
Can you clarify what you mean, like, is it...
So, I know, for example, I'm sorry, I should probably have elaborated more. From a scheduling perspective, right, students in, you know, February or so, I forget the timeline, they start putting in their course requests, and then around May, June, they're told whether or not these schedules actually work themselves out or not. A lot more students, I'm sure, than previously, previous years, were told no. They could not take any of the electives that they wanted, they couldn't take this AP class that they wanted. They were told a lot of no's. You heard a lot from the AP stats sophomores, and, but there's a lot of ones you don't hear about. AP Music Theory suddenly became, like, I just learned recently that AP Music Theory was not offered this year because of enrollment issues. Students were told no, but instead of being given alternatives, like an ediscere seat to take AP Music Theory, or the concept of independent study being actually introduced to them, they were just told no. And in this environment that we're in now, where we have so many, we're not looking at floods of money coming in, we're only looking at additional cuts happening at this point, I feel like we need to start looking at how we say yes to them. And this AP Music Theory thing really bothered me, so, because there is an ediscere class for AP Music Theory. I understand that it is not ideal, it is not, it's better to have in-person classes, but these students were seniors. They did not have an alternative option, they couldn't wait another year, and so they were told no. And some of them are majoring in music, and it just bothers me that that option was not given to them, or even discussed. And so I guess, when we think about budgets, I'm wondering, if there is, what are the line items for e-learning? I don't, I don't, I didn't, never dug through, I don't know if the, if you guys are aware of what, what dollar amounts fall in there.
They do, there are, I, I don't necessarily know what the budget is for, but I would just say, like, there are students who are taking online classes.
Yeah.
So, I don't necessarily know why the no was there, I don't honestly think that it's, that's a management thing, I don't necessarily think it'd be something that would be coming to, but there might have actually been a very good reason why somebody was, said no, whether there wasn't additional funds available, because all of the seats had been filled, or whether there could have been another complicating factor. But I, I appreciate that, and I respect that. I think Westford Academy has done, and it continues to do a great job, trying to think creatively. Can we all continue to push those bounds and, and ask good questions, and make sure that we're looking to, for the best ways? I love the way that you said that. Are we finding more ways to say yes? I, I think they are still finding a lot of ways to say yes, and they're finding a lot of opportunities for students, so I don't want to, I don't want to paint the picture that they're not. But I think your point is, is well-taken, like, are they looking to see, are they looking to find, you know, the, the, the most creative ways to provide these options for students? And so, goes back to, even if we think about, one of the things that we're hearing now more and more is that there were a number of classes that were offered, when we look even at the languages, right? And so we, we combined levels of classes so that kids could still take those, those, those classes. From my perspective, at this moment in time, the answer should have been no, and they should have just not done it. Because now, what we're seeing is we're having, now, that isn't working, and this isn't, this isn't the way that that should have been done. And so they tried to, they tried to solve a problem by providing an opportunity for a student that now is finding that that wasn't the best option, and now it's impacting maybe all of the students in the class. They would have been better off if they didn't look for that, that alternative. And so I feel like it's just something that we have to remember, that, yes, we're in a difficult budget scenario, and I think somebody said it earlier, which I, I kind of want to go back and, and just remind everybody, that we didn't really paint any of the solutions as optimal, and we're still not. We're still not. But I think to, I think to James' question earlier, like, well, okay, what is our long-range plan? What we're seeing right now is we're, we're looking at FY26, and I know that hurts, because sometimes, well, we have seniors, right, who will be leaving us, and people where they only have certain opportunities, but... But we are looking at a plan that's going to say, okay, if this is what we've heard from the town, so we're going to try to reassess and strategically develop budgets that then they'll be more inclined to support the ask later down the road.
I want to pivot to a question we got in email about, because just based on how you ended there about what we heard from the community and based on what we are allocated. There was a question in our email about, well, should we be creating a budget that is above the allocation and posing that as an option to the community? And I was just wondering if any other members had feelings on that, on whether or not they're, you know, why we're not creating an override budget, I guess, for FY26.
So it's interesting because, so I work in municipal budgets all the time. You know, I had, I just submitted mine the other day. And I know the constraints of the town budget, but I still proposed, here's what I say we need. And then allowed, in that case, select board and FinCom, they're still discussing whether or not to support that. I think the challenge with the school budget is it's a yes or no, right? So it's almost a gamble if we get to town meeting with, oh, I guess there could be an amendment with, that they can't target specific things. So I think there is some validity to doing that, to saying, this is what we actually need to, within reason, right, to operate and to provide our residents with the education that we feel is appropriate. I think it may undo some of the collaboration between town partners if we then say, you tell us, you know, 10,000, we're going to say, well, we need 20,000, you know. But, you know, I think that's part of our charge too.
So I just want to jump in. So from my day work, which is, you know, working on large budgets with the state government, I think that there are enormous concerns this year, fiscal concerns this year, that this year is going to be more stark last year on a state level. There are some concerns about what will happen with the new administration coming in, whether or not their contributions for Medicaid will remain the same, whether or not there will be blue states that are targeted for less allocations from the federal government. If those things happen, then that will impact the state government, which will eventually impact our allocations. I understand the concerns that folks are raising about a lot of different things, but I think that we are moving into a fiscal year that's going to be even more challenging at the state level than last year and that the following year may resemble something of that nature. So I think that there, to the point earlier, like saying that a lot of things are at risk and that it feels like a lot of things are under attack. And that is true because we're treading into a reality this year that may have been different than the one that we expected to be walking into and though, even though this fiscal year was predicted to be worse than last year months and months and months ago. So I think that, I don't, I don't think that that approach is the right approach for fiscal year.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yep.
Twenty-six. And also as well on that, Mari, we also heard, I think from a lot of members of the community last year about specifically our revolving funds and they really wanted that focus to be there first. And I think we have a duty as a school committee to do that this year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would definitely be open to that idea of looking at, sorry Jenny, two budgets essentially for FY27 to kind of start that conversation of, but for FY26, I just, I kind of, I agree with Mari, like it's.
I mean, I'm not, these are conversations I'm having, you know, at the state level with a lot of folks that are in government.
Yeah.
But I think we should move on to folks who are on Zoom because they've been patiently waiting.
Yeah. Do you mind if we circle around and then if you have more?
Yes.
Just to make sure we get to everybody. And it is nine o'clock, keeping an eye on the clock. So if, Megan, it looks like you have your hand raised, we'll unmute you.
She should be coming in now.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can. Thanks, Megan. Just introduce yourself and your address.
I'm Megan Akroff, A Timberly Lane. Much like Patty, I wasn't anticipating speaking tonight and I apologize because I did miss the very beginning of the meeting and it sounds like some of the questions that I had or conversation I wanted to hear regarding the PE budget from Dr. Chu were answered. So rather than kind of going back to that, I just wanted to say that I've listened to most of the meeting and it's sort of resonating with me that these discussions about efficiencies and what's best for our students are discussions that should be happening all the time, right? And not just at the time when we have no money to spread around. It's, you know, much like your own home budget, right? When things are good, you're like, yeah, let's go out to dinner. And when, when things get harder, you think like, oh, what can we cut? What can we live without? What should we not be doing? I'm listening to these discussions and the PE budget does strike me as one place where there may be some creativity in efficiencies that could have enormous gains in terms of benefiting other parts of our budget that serve our students well. So one of the things that I sort of take issue with that was said was like, what will the gym teachers think and how will they feel? I'm here speaking as a parent. I do have a senior as a sophomore, but I know you all know as well that I'm an educator in Westford. And I sent you an email earlier. Quite frankly, last, over the last year, teachers across our district have been asked to make enormous changes and pivots on dime with moment's notice, changing their roles, changing their buildings, changing their grade levels, changing how many students they have in front of them, all of those things. I think the question that we really need to be asking is how do our students feel and what are we doing for them? One of you referenced a question that I brought up in my email, I think, or maybe somebody else did as well about taking PE one time per week as elementary students and then ramping that up to, I have a senior this year who's in her first semester PE and she has it sometimes four times per week based on the block scheduling rotation. I appreciate, Dr. Chu, that you shared that at the middle school, even though because of the way the schedule works, that the middle schoolers actually have it more through the course of the year in terms of the amount. But I challenged that idea a little bit only because I think as our students progress and they grow, we're asking different things of them as students nearing the end of their K through 12 educations and thinking about their life post WA, whether that is going on to college or a career. We, as I said in my email, we ask our juniors to attend career breakfasts and job shadow days. We ask our seniors to embark on capstone projects, hopefully gaining exposure to a future career interest. And yet we do all of those things knowing that our budget supports that the activity that they are exposed to the most during their college, or rather, high school years outside of their core classes is physical education, not the extra STEM classes they want to take, not the art classes that they choose to take, not the music or theater or orchestra or performing arts that they're interested in, not the additional math classes or creative writing or journalism. So we promote this and it's something that I think is kind of special about Westford Academy and about our district in general, that we really try and foster the interests and talents of our students as they get to those grade levels. And then we take them away and say, well, you don't have time in your schedule to take that because you're doing this instead, four times per week as a senior. So I just challenge that and ask that there's some great consideration given to, again, all the things Patty said, they've done all the research, but Acton's a great example. They've been doing this for years. They have a very similar student body. How can we better achieve the goals of our diverse student body and perhaps have some great efficiencies in our budget to spread to other areas that we think would most benefit our students? So I don't really have a question, but I sincerely hope that there's discussion given to this. The part that I missed at the beginning was obviously about the timing and Valerie, I know you said the lines are getting blurry, the graduation requirements versus this discussion, but when I listened to Principal Toomey's presentation and talked about impacting the class of 2030 again, I just was struck as an educator thinking how many changes, huge changes were asked to make almost immediately based on whether the override didn't pass or different budgets or year-to-year things that change in our curriculum, in where we teach, what we teach, all of those things, that it seems a little bit ridiculous that it would take so long to make a change in this arena. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, sorry. Don't now for a minute there. Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Good luck with my turn. Yep, please, go ahead.
I'm Kristi Bates, 23 Pierce Avenue. Thank you for having this hearing and I really appreciate the back and forth and I appreciate that you're listening to questions and providing feedback. I'd love to see that in all school committee meetings, but I really appreciate this now. What I want to ask is what is the budget amount to get to optimal? Do we know it? I know you haven't, I know this is, what we did last year was an alternate budget, but I would like to know what the amount is to get to optimal. What is optimal? We've heard it would be great to have a .4 music teacher, maybe 10 additional interventionists at the schools. I don't know what else. Definitely, definitely another Spanish teacher perhaps, so we don't have to combine Spanish and I think German too to CP honors and AP. That's my only one experience with a budget impact in my family. But what is that dollar amount? Because I was out there with several of you last year holding yes to the override and was very disappointed that it didn't pass as we were all, but the impact to the school is real, as you've all just talked about and it's moving forward. It's going to be, so as a resident, I would like to be involved in making that decision as to whether or not I want to support an override. And last year, nope, it failed. But this year, how much is it? And I know that the school committee does not decide whether or not we have an override, but you do present it to the select board and then the select board can make that decision. And if they know, well, this is our budget as you, we've stayed in the guidelines or the dollar amount that you've suggested, but really to be optimal, to be where we want to be as a school committee to improve, maintain or potentially improve the school, which is your objective, we need this amount of money. And maybe it's not the, God, I should remember exact amount, but the $6 million that we asked for last year, maybe it's less. And I know the town has issues too and maybe, you know, why not go back to the residents and ask for that money that you need? And yep, they might say no, absolutely. But if you don't give the chance, they can't say yes. So I just ask that you consider doing that even if the state and the federal government are not going to give us as much money or we're not going to have a Department of Education. We have no idea what's going to happen in the future, but right now we can control what's local and we can ask the residents of our town to step up and fund what you as a school committee believe is optimal. And I just hope that you would consider doing that and let the residents make that decision or convince the select board to go out, the residents, to make that decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody online?
No.
Can I come back?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I promise I'll be quick.
That's okay.
I just want to address.
Just want to make sure I checked on Zoom and stuff, so I appreciate it. Yep.
So I just wanted to address the conversation that we were having earlier about language and the very valid point where we took a risk with language. And I think that the students, regardless of what the outcome is now, I think they at least appreciated that the opportunity was given to them. I feel, that's what I would think. I mean, the AP students are grateful probably that they're able to still take that exam and sit for it. It was, you can almost just call it a pilot. And I guess my question is whether or not, like I don't think that you should regret having done that. And you won't know until you try whether or not a approach is not going to work or if it will work. And so that would be what I would ask that you consider doing for PE. You don't have to call it a pilot, call it some, just, it does, it's, it's, it's an idea, it's something worth looking into, I feel, especially if it means you can, it will, it will help the budget. I mean, you know, interventionists, like maybe you do next year. I guess my other question was, now that you know this situation with Spanish, what in this budget has, has money been moved in the budget so that Spanish is now three classes next year? Is that part of, now that we know and now that we've heard from students in that Spanish class, are we trying to fix that next year?
This budget does not have us restoring any of the positions that we reduced from last year.
But it could if a different approach was taken so that there was funds available to address some of the larger challenges that were created by the override failing. That was it.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one point in response to what Kristi said.
Oh, sorry.
The only reason why I'm raising the issues about what might happen at the state budget level is because we prognosticate based on an amount that we believe we are going to be getting from the state. And so that number, which is not actually the number that ends up happening in July almost ever.
Right. We don't know what, at what percentage are they going to actually reimburse the things that they say that they're going to reimburse?
Or even what that number is going to be allocated by the ultimate budget because the first budget is the governor's budget and then it's the House budget and then the Senate budget and then they have to combine.
This year, the $30 per student versus the $100 per student versus the.
Right. So that's the reason why I raise that because we do base our projections on other numbers.
If we can't rely on the state, rely on the town or they get to decide.
Sorry, I have another thing to say. It was just, just another email that I sent you guys and it was related to the, we're talking about, you know, not knowing necessarily what, well, not that we not know what students want. I mean, I think a lot of emphasis is being put on the student survey that's going out, that went out for start times. And we did do a graduation requirement survey for students related to which requirements they like to increase or decrease.
Yep.
And I think it does speak volumes. When we think about, oh, you know, how are the students going to feel about PE getting combined? The student survey that was, that was given out in the fall, I thought spoke volumes. The questions they were asked were, there were two major questions below is listed graduation requirements. If you had a choice, which requirements would you increase? Which requirements would you decrease? They were able to choose more than one, they were able to choose no change. The most telling result from this is that when they were asked which requirements they wanted, they would decrease, 15.7% said no change and 50% said they would want to change, they would want to decrease the PE requirement. So that was 178 students out of 356 that were surveyed, which I think is a very telling amount when they were given the option to choose as many as they wanted. So they could have checked each one. Some of them just chose no change and some of them chose English at 18%, but PE was 50%, which to me is saying a lot. It's the students speaking for themselves, the students that weren't here to speak for themselves. It's, the survey spoke for them.
Thanks, Patty. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other hands on Zoom?
No.
Could I pivot to a different topic that?
Yeah, please. I don't want to lose track of.
We've spoken a lot about the academy. I am interested in knowing how, we talked about impacts and so how are we going to know if the shift to the multi-tier is successful or if we need to revert and at what point can we make that? You know, if we cut positions, you know, we're obviously losing a resource and losing access to the resource. So, so I just, I'd like to know in advance how we're going to measure that to know if we need to come back to it in the future, so.
That's a good question. I think part of it is the regular data teams that are, the data meetings that are taking place anyway, right, that are actually sort of fueling those interventions in the first place, right? So those will continue to happen. Even right now, one of the things I was meeting with, with the two curriculum coordinators, the K to five curriculum coordinators today, and we established the, I think it's. the K to five curriculum coordinators today, and we established the, I think it's the first week in February after they've collected all of their mid-year data, and after they have a chance to have a data, the data teams, the, the meetings with, at the school level, we've gone ahead and scheduled a meeting to then have, to specifically look at this cohort of grade five, right? To say, okay, let's look at their mid-year assessment, meeting with, but also bringing the, oh, it's getting late, I'm sorry, the six through 12, the six through 12 ELA and STEM curriculum coordinator together to say, okay, let's look at, at the data that we've, that, that people have been talking about with, specifically with grade five, right? And say, okay, as we're, we, we know that grade four, they'll still be in the elementary level, so they'd still be meeting the, they'd still be getting the, the support from the interventions that we would still already have there. But then as we're looking at these three other positions, the three other intervention positions, would they, would any of that need to be reallocated to the middle school level, either on a temporary basis or throughout the year? Or are there things that we can be doing this spring specifically based on the data that they're going to look at in January, that they should be focusing on this spring before even transitioning to middle school? But having that conversation together? And I think we'll continue to remain committed to looking at. One of the reasons why we have the, the information that we shared with you this year is because we've been looking more closely at it, following all the conversations that we had last year, right? So that is going to continue to happen, so that if we see that there's a, if we see that there's a growing need, we'll have time to address it. That's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but...
Can I just jump in on, just while you're speaking on that data, I love that idea of the group coming together, both the elementary and, and middle school staff. I know you're talking, or probably referring to that DIBELS review that happens, start, mid, and end of year. I would also maybe encourage, because I know based on what Courtney's also presented before on the MCAS, that you can, I think, also get a breakdown within the MCAS data of what areas, because, because like I've, I've mentioned before, the DIBELS only looks at kind of reading accuracy and reading fluency and comprehension at a, at a very, like, basic sentence level, as opposed to the MCAS, which is a bit more fuller on the literacy. So, and you have that data already, it means you can dive into it with the DIBELS aside, beside you, and kind of look at it more holistically. Because the one thing we don't do in the district is, is assess writing and, but MCAS does.
So that was part of our conversation today, right?
Oh, yeah.
As well, in terms of talking, because one of the questions when we were looking at that data point, I asked the question, okay, did something change in the, in, in the test, right? Or in, if, if all of a sudden, we've seen a, there has been a decrease for that entire cohort, right? Statewide, there's a decrease. Ours was more significant than, than some others, right? So that's why we're looking at it carefully. And I said, well, what was the change? Well, as we're rolling out the EL curriculum, the EL curriculum does have that writing embedded into it, and they're doing more of it this year. So that's one of the things they were talking about, is even talking about the difference. Last year, it was a slower rollout of that, and not as much of it was being done. And one of the things that we, we don't know if this is a piece to it or not, but one of the questions that we had was, well, historically, there was some MCAS prep-type activities that took place at the elementary level that didn't, didn't universally take place last year. Some people still did it, but others didn't because they were rolling out the EL curriculum, and it's embedded in the EL curriculum, except the difference is, is that instead of doing this one activity, where we're reading this one thing and we're responding to this one thing, it's now actually part of this week-long piece in EL where we're doing, we're talking, we're collecting the data today. And so, over time, they're very optimistic that it's going to be more embedded, but that was one of the things that they said, well, we're moving through the EL curriculum faster this year because last year, and so I was like, oh, that actually could be a piece.
Yeah.
To understand it.
Yeah.
But that's part of the, I think, the conversation that they were having, as they were explaining it to me as well too, because again, it's not my background.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was part of our conversation, was to say, okay, well then what does this mean? Should we be looking at, are there EL resources that could actually expand to sixth, sixth grade in the middle school, as their curriculum does?
Yeah.
Those are things that we talked about.
Awesome. And you mentioned some, a marker, a schedule in February, could we ask that at some point, some feedback from that comes to us?
Yeah, let me, we scheduled it today. It's the first week of February, so in, in a February meeting, I'll give you, we'll provide you with an update.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for raising that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that we have something that we're benchmarking against.
Yeah.
If, if we're, again, cutting a service, or reducing a service, not cutting, reducing the resources available, that we know the impact.
Like, do we keep, like, even something along the lines of, you know, and I'm not expecting you to know this, Dr. Chu, but maybe it's something to bear in mind when we're having those conversations with staff, like, do we keep data of the number of kids that come through the various interventions for the last few years, so that...
Well, you will see, in, it connected to the questions that we've provided back to you with the, in the PDF. We did link some longitudinal data. It's not complete, because there's some time where people are no longer with us that can give us that information, but we found where it was being tracked previously.
Okay.
And so you'll see that we have that all the way back to...
It's called Year 19.
Thank you.
Seventeen.
Jenny, how do you do it? Jenny, so that's in our packet.
Impressive.
All of the, no, that's okay.
There's some missing, there's some missing, there's some missing data. In the first couple of years, you know, we don't have the specifics by school, but we have the aggregate. And then, then there's like FY '22, FY '23, it's a little spotty.
Yeah.
But then we have the FY '24 and FY '25 data as well too. But I feel like it's going to at least give you an idea, is, okay, actually, there's been a kind of consistence, consistent, for the most part, you can see where there, there was some, there was some decline in reading intervention, or math intervention support. But then you'll see a drastic decline in the numbers in FY '25 because we changed the way in which we were identifying students.
I'm going to take a quick second here and just point out that the school committee does collate our own individual questions as members, and sends those to administration. They answer them, and there was sort of two rounds to that, based on this year's schedule. That PDF is in our packet, and it's like nine pages of questions that came from our, our members ourselves. So if, if we're reacting to questions from the public and emails tonight, I want the public to also know that there were generated questions internally that were also answered, and that's public, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Christina Pelpa, 11 Villanova Drive. I'm a mother of two high school students, as well as a math interventionist at Abbott. I just want to clarify, when we talk about numbers of intervention students, that, I don't know if rules is the right word there, but the rules of the students we were allowed to pick up this year is different from the past.
Yeah, that's what I was just talking about.
So although it maybe looks like we're seeing less students, it's because that's what we were allowed to do.
Well, it's, it's, well, I'm going to push back a little bit, it's not a question of as to what you were allowed to do. It was a question of when we looked at what the criteria was, there was a much larger window in which students who were, as opposed to the 20 percentile, which is what we explained in that, and we, we kind of broke down what the adjustments were to the MTEST model, and to what you're saying, that it used to be students who were in the 30th to 40th percentile, but now we're looking at students in the 20th to 30th.
So...
So it was the, the students who were being identified, that those numbers did change, which is what I was just trying to say. So those numbers did drop because we were identifying a different number of students.
So last year, the, in math, I can't speak to reading. In math, IREDDI screens the entire school. Last year, we looked at the lowest 20th percent of each grade in each school. This year, we're looking at the lowest 30th percentile of the nation, so comparing us to the entire nation. And that is a very small amount of children. Now, we're busy, we're pushing into rooms, we're not just sitting doing nothing. We are seeing students in other ways.
But it's...
But it doesn't have the same effect, and in grades three through five, that is non-instructional time, it's a, they're wind blocked, they don't receive instruction, so they're not missing classes when they meet with us.
Right.
I also can't speak through kids, through...
And that came from us implementing IREDDI and learning how to use this data. And the point being is that we were just taking our bottom students, regardless of where they were based towards the standards, which is why this now is looking at IREDDI and saying, okay, where are they at in progressing towards their mastery of the standards, which is really what should be, what's triggering whether somebody needs intervention or not.
Well, versus standards is a little bit different to me than versus the nation, right?
Yes.
And I almost want to know what, how different that data is versus Massachusetts, because we know education in Massachusetts is different than elsewhere in the country.
Right, and IREDDI doesn't allow that.
Hasn't filtered by Massachusetts, okay. Because that would be an interesting data point to me to say, you know, is, does that bar change a little bit based on...
Because my understanding was we were kind of just taking, looking at that 20 to 30 percent of each grade level, not necessarily of who was against the state standards.
And we were reassessing them. We weren't just taking them, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We were reassessing and seeing, does this student really need it? We were talking to the teachers. And now we're hearing from teachers, why can't you pick this student up? We're hearing from parents, why can't you pick this student up? There are students who we felt like, and then when we were meeting in the classroom with the entire class in small groups, we were feeling like we should have picked that student up, but they didn't meet the requirement. So it doesn't, it didn't feel like the requirement was quite on mark to, to the math interventionists.
And I think that speaks to some, like, success criteria that, in reflection, that we should be embedding in this process. So thank you for sharing, Christina.
Thank you.
And I think someone behind you was about to come up next. No, that's okay.
If you did just follow up on that, Dr. Chu, if, if there is any sort of kind of review or conversation regarding those...
Well, I think it would be great to have Erin and Julie come back and talk about it.
Yeah, because would that impact then the numbers? I mean, I know you budgeted for 15 interventionists, and I always talk, it's quality over quantity as well, so I, I don't want interventionists, for the sake of it, I do appreciate the support, my own student, my own kids have benefited from it.
Yep.
But yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Hi, my name's Sharonine, and I'm at 202 Westford Hills Row. I think, I appreciate every one of us in here. Basically, we try to achieve the goal of, like, reaching the optimal efficiency, right? But the problem is how? And we've seen a lot of changes, right? We just talked about a lot of changes, right, to the students, and definitely it affects them negatively, honestly, right? And however, I don't really see the flexibility, well, at the same time, if the flexibility provided by the school can allow the student have, try to get the same opportunity that they can get what they should get. For example, the AP class, right? So we talk about, yes, you know, they can still take it in a junior or senior year, but we also talk about planning. One of, you know, my, my kids already planned, he's taking one AP class in sophomore year, but no, but he has the expectation and we have expectation. However, at the very end, boom, nope, you got nothing. And also instead, because it's the last minute, so he doesn't, I mean, yeah, he, he doesn't get what, what he should, and then, of course, we all are kind of disappointed, but at the same time, we still think, we thought that the school would provide some flexibility, that we can probably, I encouraged him, oh, could do something online, and then you can take the AP later, or, you know, things like that. But it turned out, what happened was, like, the beginning of the year, this year, when we tried to enroll for the AP tests, we could take it, however, WA doesn't allow us because they set the deadline already passed. But we were not informed that, oh, actually ninth and 10th grader, they can take the AP. We didn't know until my son told me, because he said some of his classmates are doing that. So we asked WA, but they said, oh, the deadline was done, I mean, gone. So I tried to enroll him still, and I had to go through different towns and ask them, one call off another, would you be able to let my, you know, son sit in there? Finally, I found one, but they charged double for taking that. Okay, so, but the whole thing was like, honestly, we are, we are rule follower. So when the rule saying that is not, cannot do it, then we, we just being silent, right? But not until someone talked about it, then my son knows it, and he told me, and I'm like, okay, let's do it now. But then the school just saying, I mean, I mean, they are trying to help, I know that, but at the same time, the rule is rule. And I'm like, okay, so what can we do? That's why I move on to call all these, you know, places to, to get AP, AP class, I mean, AP tests. So to me, I feel like, it's kind of like penalized for those who try to, try to get what they're supposed to get, and especially for those students, they are capable of taking more, right? And then now they're saying that, we are saying that we're doing on our own, however, because the rules are there, we, we, we can't, right? So that is one thing. And then the other thing is, like, how much the school would really listen to the students and parents before they implement all this? I know last year was kind of like, just a shock, right? It just, we didn't know until the end of the year, and we know it's so hard for every one of us in here, try to change the plan or whatever. But that's why I'm here today, because I have one that coming to high school now. We need to do a better planning, I think, and probably the students or parents should get, you know, more information, or get a chance to talk about what they want. That is very important, because another example is like, we know in, in middle school, they, they give this each student, I think, a case to lock their phone, so that they won't use it in, in a classroom. Okay, my daughter, she doesn't have a phone. So what happened is they still give her the phone, saying that it's already been paid, okay? So when my daughter hear the word, she was like, oh, we don't have money to go for the field trip, but we have money to spend on the phone case. So for things like that, I, you know, I'm a parent, I, I tried to explain it to her. However, I don't even know this until she told me. Then I feel, uh-uh, okay, so does the school really, like, send out information, I mean, send out a questionnaire or something to ask a student or parents, you know, what do you think about having this? Do you think that's, you know, good or, or what? But now we're talking about money, right? Because we really, we, with this limited resources, we need to spend every dime carefully. And I would, I would think that should be fairly too, right? So that is another thing. And the last thing I would like to talk about is the, the PE, I think many of them talk about the PE already. And one thing I'm thinking, because we moved from out of state to here, because of the good reputation of Westford, I mean, Westford schools. But one thing I was a little bit disappointed was the school, they don't allow to take like outside credit, like, because my children, they, like, very actively participate in national level competition for, for sport, but the school wouldn't allow to take that credit. I'm thinking if for budget cut, if, like, if you allow those students to take it outside, then the class can be, you know, smaller amount of students, and then can help for budget cut, I don't know, but this is one of the suggestion that I'm thinking, and which I think it has to be like, yeah, get approval from the school level or the district level, see if that's would, would be something can, you know, can be considered.
Well, first, welcome to Westford.
Yeah.
It sounds like you, you joined, moved to town recently. And I, I know it's not always accessible or pushed out, but we do talk about a lot of those topics in these meetings, and they are, they are publicized on Westford Cat, and you can sign up for the agenda, so I can, I know you sent us an email, so I can give you some tips on how to stay included in the agendas and stuff like that, so that you know when a topic is coming up, if that will help. I, I was so focused on...
I heard you saying that because we did talk about the cell phone cases in these meetings.
Sorry, thank you, yeah, I knew it, yeah.
So it wasn't, there was conversations in these school committee meetings about the cell phone case. I'm interested in what field trip your daughter said that she wasn't able to go on.
I think for eighth grade, they cut all the field trips. There's basically none, like, for example, the most recent one I knew, because I volunteer there, is from Discovery Museum. They could only allow one presenter go to the school, because it's funded, I think it's funded by the PTO as well.
That's different, yeah.
They can't afford...
Those are the arts and enrichment programs that are funded by the PTO.
Right, and then they can't afford to have one more or help...
They are, they are still going on field trips. The, the eighth graders still have field trips, and some, they've already, as a matter of fact, I can't remember, actually...
They were at the State House?
They're at the State House already.
But only Stony Brook did that, Lanchard didn't do that.
Right.
Lanchard didn't go there?
Yeah, no, that was reported in this meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, no. That was reported in this meeting. So it was only one of them.
But don't they typically also do kind of end of year field trips as well?
They still have, yeah.
Yeah. Across.
I would actually.
So they're planning on.
I would actually just say, the next thing would be, are you signed up for the principal emails? Cause that would be another piece, is to make sure that you, you're getting the, the weekly information that's coming out from the principals.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, cause, yeah, for that, that field trip, instead of a field trip, then they have someone sent from Discovery Museum to here. And then they said, because of the budget, they can't afford to send another person. And they asked for parents.
The budget had no impact on, on.
Those are different.
Those are different.
It was a different budget, is what they're trying to say.
Okay. Yeah, cause they asked for volunteer, and that's why I was there. And then I've been hearing, okay, cause there's not enough money. I'm like, oh, no.
Yeah. The, the PTO at each building drives the in-house.
The parent teacher organization.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah. Drives the in-house, in-house field trips, which are like arts and enrichment presentations.
Yeah, assemblies and stuff.
That fundraisers from the families fund those throughout the year for each grade level. It varies by building, what, what kind of things they do to try to give that enrichment throughout the year for the students. But that's not, that's not our district budget.
That's not the operating budget.
Okay. Cause I've been hearing, like, a lot of other towns, they, for eighth graders, they, they go to different places. Museums in Boston, or, you know, all that. But I don't hear anything in, in Blanchard yet. So, yeah, that's why I wonder.
I think some of that was also driven by the teachers, the curriculum, what they're working on. Like, we don't have like district dictated like field trips and stuff, because it's really down to the autonomy of the, the teachers as to what they're working on, what's available, what's appropriate as well to, you know.
And I wonder if the teacher have the budget to do it?
No, I, I would, I, I think it's a great question.
Yeah.
I would actually encourage you to write the principal. I think you should email Principal Heslip and ask him that question. Because he's gonna be in the best position to say, these are the things that our eighth graders are doing this year.
But also.
Cause it might be a team thing. It might be one team's doing something, another team's doing something else. But there could be things that are, that are going on. And I think that would, that would be, that would just be the most, that'd be the most beneficial thing, I think, for you to just get the, at least the eighth grade information.
Okay. But also, we don't, like, we don't pay for field trips out of our operating budgets.
Right.
Like, we don't fund field trips.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
From the, yeah, from the operating.
Operation budgets, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we did pay for the phone cases. But we don't pay for.
Good sir.
Which are funded by a grant.
We're funded by a grant.
So.
I don't wanna like leave you with bad information. Like, we did, we did pay for the phone cases. We don't pay for field trips. And in past years, there were other field trips in the eighth grade that don't exist now. Yes.
Yeah.
Field trips are generally.
I genuinely understand your confusion, cause I'm like, there's actually, you're, you're talking about a lot of things, so I get that. But I'm like, but they're, they're not all connected. So that's why it's like, oh, wait a second. Yeah.
Field trips are generally funded by the families.
Or like fundraising.
There's a cost for each student.
Yeah.
I'm gonna circle us back to budget.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I'd wanna keep us a little bit on the rails at the late hour.
Okay.
Thank you so much, though. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, there's, I, I know there's one more that stood out to me in the emails that I want to make sure we touch on, which is, there was a question about, you know, that there's, the proposal includes an expansion of like the medically fragile program. I'm blanking on, the sale program. Thank you.
Reach program.
The question was, are there, were there any other programs like that that were explored to expand specifically, like a language-based classroom?
So the short answer is no. Those are, those three in itself are a lot. But I think in terms of language-based programs, one of the, one of the, cause I, I received another email from somebody asking specifically about Orton Gillingham, and about Orton Gillingham trained staff. And that's actually, we, we have, we, we tend to try to hire specialists who have different backgrounds to, to support the needs of our students. And the, one of the differences, I think, with a language-based program is as the content, as students are getting older, and as the content is, and we have more and more content specialists, that really to have a, I, I think, and this would be a better question for Gerard Coughlin to answer, but I will try from my perspective to answer. My understanding would be that in order for us to develop a language-based program, especially for our older students, we would, we would need Orton Gillingham-type specialists within the content areas. So it would require a different level of either co-teaching and/or staffing and skill set that would, I, I actually think is, it could be a wonderful idea, but I think it would be a very different cost of investment than what we're proposing. So it's not something that, it's a good question, and it's, it's not that we wouldn't explore it, right? I mean, I think it's something that we could look at. But I think it's also, that's, cause the question came to me, somebody was asking, you know, in terms of like comparing what we're, what we're creating and, and knowing that there are times in which we've, we've had students who have left the district and have, have received different placements to be in a, a language-based program at the high school level or at the middle school level specifically. And, and I think that that was kind of the difference. Their question was, wouldn't we, wouldn't it be a greater savings to us if we invested in something like that? And that, to me, it's just, it's, it requires so much more staffing.
Yeah.
To support it, that it's not the same that, of what we're, of what we're proposing right now. It's not that we would never explore it. It's that it's, those, that's why it's very different.
Got it. I think you've been finding those people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Seems like things are kind of winding down, which is appropriate based on.
I'm just really happy that we had so many people engaged with the public hearing.
Yep.
Because there, it's been great questions. It's, sometimes it's helped for clarification. Sometimes it's helped to add additional perspective. But even last year, we didn't have a lot of people. And that was, and we know, we know what last year was looking like. We didn't have this type of public input during the hearing, and we never did before.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Related to the two programs that you were talking about expanding, right? One of which was the REACH program into NAMAS at school?
Yeah.
Right? Was there any discussion as to whether or not the district should be exploring getting another BCBA?
That conversation comes up with just the existing programs, whether or not an additional teacher is something that we'd be looking at, or whether we'd be looking at a BCBA at different times. And we keep asking that question.
Mm-hmm.
It, I, I think, right now, that is not part of, that is not part of the proposal. And we have increased the number of BCBAs that we do have right now. But.
Part-time, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We only have one full-time BCBA, right?
I don't think that that's true.
Okay.
And I'll get those numbers to you, but it, but.
I'm just curious, if we're, if we're gonna expand a program, I'm just.
Yep.
Saying, was there, was there any?
It's been part of the conversation.
A behavioral specialist.
Right. It's been part of the conversation. And one of the things that we were looking at specifically with, with, with the REACH program, knowing that it was going to NAB, is that we're looking at trying to expand where those programs are for those neighborhood schools. The numbers of those students, the numbers of students that we're servicing, wouldn't be changing significantly. And so some of the resources that we have, we would still be able to use to support the number of students that we have.
In theory.
In theory. And so we're looking, we're talking about, and we, it is part, the, 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 the BCBA is part of the conversation all the time.
Great. That's, that's my question and my take home, that I hope we're having a discussion about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The geography is a real thing, too.
Yeah.
You know, that we have to.
Millard and NAB's not bad, but there's some others, yeah.
Which stands for Board Certified Behavioral Analyst.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I know, you know, like, we talk about class sizes and trying to keep them to kind of our ideals. Do we have similar conversations or guidelines regarding the likes of our BCBAs, our speech-language therapists?
The caseloads in general?
What is like an appropriate number of caseloads, like numbers for the staff members? Cause that's actually something I don't think I've ever heard discussed.
We do talk about it. We talk, we, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we, it is something that we are, that we're talking about. And the interesting piece is that because again, special education itself is so fluid.
Yeah.
We actually have that conversation multiple times during the year, right? Similar to ELL, if you remember a couple of years ago, we needed to hire an ELL teacher in the middle of the year because the, the numbers had changed so significantly that we made a mid-year hire, and then needed to reflect it in the, in the upcoming budget. We look at that with special education teachers and BCBA, and all of the support in general to that regard, but.
But also because the grid is the grid, right? So you have a person who is delivering a service, and it's like four times 30, or whatever it is. So there are only that many.
And even though, and even though our number of students don't change during the year, the number of students who are receiving services could, based on their evaluations.
The amount of service that they receive. So I think like, it's, it's kind of different in terms of the fact that because they have to deliver the service in those blocks, then at some point, you do have to add someone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yeah.
Anybody else online?
I was just closing, thought circling back to the idea of the ideal budget. Ideal budget is obviously restoring everything we lost last year. But is there something in between that you would prefer to be living with going into next year than what you're proposing at this point? And whether or not that's something the select board would even entertain? The idea of a significantly smaller override this year, school-specific, that maybe it would have a better chance of, of passing if it didn't have the, the, the doubters of town budget, you know? Just, I, I'm just curious.
I will say, if I can, this is my concern. My concern with any type of additional ask this year is that, yes, yes, we have, our, our, we have concerns with our, with our operating budget, no doubt. And we're looking at that. I think we are developing, we, we've developed a plan that is the way in which we can say, okay, how can we, how can we do our best to maintain what it is that we have at this moment, knowing that we had to make these drastic reductions? But trying not to need to make more drastic reductions. We also have resource issues. We have, we have issues and concerns with our buildings. And we are going to be in a position where we are going to have very large asks of our entire town. So I think we have to be very strategic in how we are showing our partners, our, the voters in town, our town partners, everybody, how we are being responsible with the resources that we have access to. And I fear that if we are not working and doing everything that we can to try to bring a balanced budget to town meeting, and then also at the same time, ask for support from our community to go into a feasibility study for a potential new building that could help all of our, it can actually help all of our elementary schools, then I just, I, I feel like, I, I feel like people are gonna get lost in what our needs are. And so we need to be very clear as to this is what, this is what this need is, and this is what that need is.
Yeah, I was just thinking as, as we were talking about the, the multi-tiered classrooms, that, you know, I think there was a, there may have been a ghostwriter article that nothing had changed after.
Right.
Right? Which kind of went against, and it, it's not real, it's not the reality that we are realizing. So I just, I'm just wondering.
But there also might be ways for us to listen to what people's concerns are, and listen to what, the, what, what we tried.
Yep.
That might not necessarily be the, the best solution. And to see, okay, is there a different solution? Or maybe, and again, sometimes it might be, maybe, maybe, maybe a level of a class doesn't run, you know? Or something to that effect. And those are different things that we knew would be a possible side effect of the, the failed override. But I think, I just think we need to be very careful as to, as to how we approach coming together with all of our partners.
I think that review would be very helpful of like, you know, cause I know we, we cut a lot of staff unfortunately this last year. But it sounds like, you know, maybe there's some way of alleviating, you know, a little bit of the languages, a little bit of the orchestra issue. And, and actually, something that I hadn't heard before until this evening with our staff meeting was, one of the students shared with us that he has seen a difference in his labs in that they're, he, he's, they're doing less because there's more kids in the class.
True.
So they're not as hands-on and, and practical in those lab, lab settings. So, you know, I, I think it would be helpful to kind of start getting an idea of, okay, as we prepare FY '27, not just what can we do within what our, what we, our forecasted, but what's our wants list to even just alleviate some of it?
And, and I think that's a form of advocacy in itself.
Yeah.
Which is like capturing these experiences and communicating them to the community or in our town partners of not, not necessarily, here's a number that we need, but we want you to fully understand, even if you're not watching all of our meetings.
Yep.
These, this, these are the results and the impacts of the discussions that, in, in our department, right? And, and so I think that's, that reflection piece of the budget impacts.
Yeah.
Could, could turn into a communication outreach.
Yeah.
So. Well, that's a lot to process. So we have an open budget hearing, which is only closed with a motion.
Oh, true.
Sure. I'm so proud of myself for remembering that. So I'll take a motion to close the budget, public hearing for the FY '26 school budget. So moved.
Second.
Larry and Sean, all in favor? Okay, so we'll be back here in about two weeks with a planned budget vote on our agenda. And we, I think we had some really good discussions tonight, heard some really great perspectives, a lot to think about. And we will have a brief business meeting on that night, and then shift to our start times forum at eight o'clock that night. So. Just a reminder. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All in favor? Good night.